Okay, I apologize for being late, but I have to do another job that I work at. Anyway, I'm here, but anyway, it's good to be here, it's good that you're here, and if you're ready, let's get started.
All right. Give up.
Well, let me first introduce myself. My name's Joe Simea. I am the Senior Vice President for the Sterling Group. I need to apologize for some of my partners. They were, you probably remember, may remember, that Mr. Stillman Knight and Mr. John Van Meter have been here in the past, and fortunately, their travel plans were affected by the hurricane that's supposed to hit the coast, so I'm the pinch hitter. So, you know, first time I'm here tonight, but I really do want to say I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you. I feel like first I should wish Councilwoman Howell a happy birthday. I understand it's a great day today, so someone told me 42 years ago you were born here, so...
She'll come back any time.
But again, I'm joined by David Niekamp, who you may remember from prior meetings, who's part of our team, and then Mr. Salas Panera is here tonight, and he's going to talk to you a little about the proposed hotel development. I'm going to go quickly through these slides, because I've been told that you've seen them before. There's some, a little bit of new information, but I don't want to, obviously, belabor the point and let you have time to ask questions of us. So, we're here to talk to you about a proposed development on 25 acres, which is very closest, obviously. It is outlined in red on the overhead in front of you. It is divided by a creek that runs east and west, about five to six acres on the north side and the 19 to 20 on the south side. As you can see, a little closer diagram that shows that the proposed development would consist of basically two primary different projects. The first one would be a hotel development, like I said, located in the front parcel, fronting upon Business 74, and then the apartment project would be located to the south, that other side of the creek, and on the north side of Carolina Courts. A little bit about us, to the extent you don't know, we're basically a fully integrated company. That's a fancy word, saying that we do everything from soups to nuts. We acquire the ground, we entitle the ground, we have our own construction company, we have our own investment company, we have our own property management company. So, we're in it for the long haul. What we build, we own, and we develop. We have a number of projects in the area. The Charlotte metropolitan area has been a place of emphasis for us. Primarily, we go where the jobs go and the population goes, and Charlotte is a tremendous attraction for both those. Our company was founded by a gentleman who's still with us. He's been developing for over 45 years. We've constructed about 25,000 apartment units. We currently have under our own management ownership about 8,000 units throughout the Midwest and Southeast, and another 8,000 self-storage units, which is another part of our business. As I said, we're in-house with our construction, and we're in-house with our property management. Some of our previous developments, which you may or may not be aware of, but just to show you the breadth of what we've done, this is a long tag list of them. One you might be familiar most of with is the Enclave at Bales Ridge, which is a 246-unit development located already within your jurisdiction. All of our projects are Class A market rate apartment homes. What does that mean? That means that we're looking at the highest end of the rental market. Quite honestly, we're seeking to attract young professionals, people that are transitioning from one housing to another, people that may be here on a temporary basis, they're looking for an environment that provides them with all the amenities they're looking for, and in a quality setting. So, all of our projects will have a clubhouse leasing center. The amenities center will have such things as a business center, a pool, typically what you'd see in a modern facility. We do build two- and three-story product. We are planning, this one would have around 54 attached garages and 360 detached garages to provide more than ample parking for our residents. Again, some of these things, well, we'd get more into detail if the project does proceed. You'll see them in greater detail. Again, a list of the amenities, you can see this is a very modern facility, a high-level investment in our projects. Again, we are looking at a market that are people that are choosing to be renters by choice, not people that are forced to rent. We have found out that over the years, as the demographics have changed, and you'll see in most communities, there is a high emphasis on people that choose to rent instead of own. If you look at young millennials, they have different values and looking for different things than a lot of other people. There are things we've found out is that a rental community provides density at a level that can support a lot of the surrounding businesses, so if you're trying to build up a retail area, community restaurants, coffee houses, those sorts of things, typically you will find a Class A project not far from them, because people want to be within walking distance and service those patrons, and obviously, the retailers in those areas want to make sure they have a set customer base and rooftops. An example, if you're not familiar with our product, this is an example, I think this is Enclave at Bales Ridge, looking at the values there at the top. This is the leasing area. This is the pool area. Obviously, we have common areas, because quite honestly, it is a community. We find out that a lot of our residents socialize together around different demographics, depending upon their age, where they want to be, so it's not unusual to see around our pool or some of the recreation areas for there to be cookouts or people entertaining having theirs. This is quite honestly, an office interior, a part of our leasing office. It also serves, quite honestly, as a common area, gathering area. It'll be Wi-Fi enabled, there'll be places for people sitting together to talk. You know, a lot of people now do business outside of the office, and this provides them with the opportunity to meet in groups, obviously. A typical two- and three-story building, this one happens to have garage units that you drive into and then walk right into your apartment unit. You know, weather is not as big an issue here, maybe, as it is in southern areas. You don't have to shovel sunshine, but having said that, it still is convenient for people that want to have not only the security, but the convenience of being located right next to their units. Again, another example of those, common interior, you'll see, notice a couple of things, granite interiors, modern appliances, you know, custom cabinetry throughout, the fixtures you can see are all modernized, floor treatments, that's hardwood floors, you know, quite honestly, a high-end or high level of finish in our product. This is a conceptual site plan, so as we look at this, this is a little different than you've probably seen in the past, because we're trying to refine, but we've kind of hit the point of that we need to stop until we can get in the field and actually investigate the topography of the property, and actually understand what the natural land will allow, where utilities can go, what are the best pedestrian paths. But you can see, basically, this has roughly 268 units and two- and three-story buildings, ample parking, large green space, quite honestly, that includes passive and active recreational areas. We will have probably some onsite retention, detention on the area, obviously, but plans can only go so far, because we have to start coordinating with your local agencies to understand their needs, their desires, their requirements, before we can actually lay it out. The preliminary units mix, just based upon what we believe, based upon our market study, and the surrounding areas, what we'd see is a mix of three bedrooms. As you can see, the rent's running anywhere from $1,000 to $1,100. Two bedrooms, running a little step up from $1,300 to $1,500. This shows $1,400, I think, is the max, and then three bedrooms is $1,600. The mixes, quite honestly, are based upon our market study and understanding of the median incomes area and some analysis that we've done. It will be refined as we refine the product. A lot has to be done, but we need to start somewhere. I'm open for discussion, obviously. I guess what I'd like to tell you is, we're at the point now where we like the site, it's under contract, and we're committed. Before we take the next step, quite honestly, we wanted to come and present again to you and make sure that we were operating the same level as you all were with respect to your expectations. One of the things that we have talked about and obviously made clear to us is that you would like to see the hotel development proceed with us contemporaneously. I have Mr. Salas Panera, who we're under a letter of intent with. He is a hotel developer, and I wanted to speak a little about his project. Our intent would be for him to undertake the hotel development as we do the apartment project, obviously. The dividing line would be about the creek. Depending upon how much ground is required for the hotel development, there may be some additional retail opportunity on that same parcel on the north side of the creek, but until we can actually get in and start spending the money to get the topography, the actual design and layout, the traffic requirements and things, it's probably premature to say that that's a definite component. We know the hotel's a priority for us and for Mr. Panera, so it would be the first thing that we would engineer and make sure it has appropriate views, appropriate parking, appropriate siding for his uses, and then from there, if there's additional ground or opportunities available, we would pursue that, obviously. With respect to the apartment project, as I said before, we're ready to take the next step, assuming that we, you know, are comfortable that it's something that you are receptive to. Just so you know, this starts a very long process for us, that a lot of people may not be familiar with, but we start now, have to go into our heavy due diligence, our design and development phase of the project, and our financing project of the project. Before the first shovel goes in the ground, and before we would ever even buy the land, we'll have close to $1 million in out-of-pocket cost that would go to move the project forward. And so, we don't take that investment lightly. We obviously want to make sure that we feel that we have a good sense of partnership with our civic partners and our governmental partners before we move forward. We plan to be part of the community, and given the amount of investment, we obviously want to do as much as we can upfront and get your feedback, so we can take into account. And quite honestly, if there's things that just, quite honestly, would cause us not to move forward, we'd rather know that early in the process and later. We don't see that now, but obviously, that's why we're here. The value of the project, you know, as I speak here, you know, since the last time I was here, I think we've had a half-interest, half-point interest or 500 basis points go up in the federal interest rate, where obviously, that affects us. At some point, it can be effective. Right now, we're still moving forward with all our projects. The market moves all the time, but obviously, we're trying to do this in real time. But right now, our estimate is this is a $40 million to $45 million investment, resulting in a tax-based increase of between $400,000 and $500,000. The hotel project is probably very similar. It's a probably $40 million to $45 million project, and depending upon the tax rate, would have probably similar tax impacts. In addition to that, we typically see an uptick, quite honestly, and we try to use local. Even though we have a construction company, we use local tradesmen to the extent possible, and they're available, to do our projects, and so we usually see an uptick, quite honestly, in the job creation that we have, and then, of course, we do our own property management, and we hire all locally, so all our property personnel, whether it be leasing agents, property managers, maintenance technicians, pool technicians, they will all come from the local economy. So, we have a good track record of being a very positive influence on the communities we've been in. We have no problem, if you'd like to speak with those community leaders that we're in or tour any of our products, we'd gladly make that available. With that, quickly, I'll move it over to Mr. Panera, who will talk to you a little about the hotel development.
My name is Salas Panera. I'm the local over here for like 27 years, and we do the retail and the hotel development. We got most of them over the retail business in North Carolina, and over the hotel in Lake Tennessee. We have a Hilton brand and Marriott brand, and we are working right now with Hilton and Marriott to get a flag. It's going to be about 98 rooms to 110 rooms, high-end hotel, and I think we need it in one hotel over here on like Indian Trail, and we talked with Patrick last month, and we are, we're getting all the data from Carolina Court and all the sports events, so we are very, 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 very excited. We still don't have a flag, like sign up, but we are working very hard, and we want to build one of the best hotels in Matthews and Stolling and this area, so that's what we are working on. And any question for me? I can answer.
Do you own hotels now?
We do own seven hotels in Lake Tennessee.
In Tennessee?
Nashville and Cleveland and Memphis and that side.
And what are they?
We have a three Hampton's, we have a two Marriott, we got one, one is Wingate, and we are, we are under construction in Element right now.
What was the last one?
Element.
Element?
It's like $45 million project.
Okay, and I'm not as familiar with the element. What is an element?
That's the one that's very high-end. We don't have it yet in Charlotte.
All right, well, that's probably why I don't know. It has a lot to do with it, why I don't know.
There is only one in, right now, is under construction in Charlotte. It's like $60 million project in Charlotte, so...
And I know you probably can't answer this question, but if it's either a Hampton or Marriott, which is two very good names, and I do travel a lot, and generally stay...
So, is it Hilton? Hilton has it in like Hampton's and like Hilton brand?
They carry, you know, I know there's different levels, and you may not be able to tell us which one it is, but I think council would probably be interested in to know at least what level you would...
It's going to be the similar to the Hampton or the Holiday Inn Express, pretty much same, same kind of, because we cannot get it in Hampton, it's already here, so we cannot get it Hampton.
So, you can't get a Hampton?
No, because it's already, like, territory is given, and...
What can you get?
Well, there are a few of them, and I cannot, I cannot discuss their flag, but it is same level as a Hampton. It's going to be $120 average, like ADR, and...
Marriott would be one of them?
Yes, Marriott is very much interested right now, but Marriott, I can tell you, your name is Marriott is Fairfield, that's what they want to build here, Fairfield. But Marriott also coming out with a new product in next month, and we haven't seen here yet the prototype, and IHG is coming out with a new, new brand, and Hilton coming out with the two new brands, so the hotel industry is very hot right now, so everybody coming with different, different flag, and, but it's going to be either Hilton, Marriott, or the IHG products.
Okay, and you're going to sign, you say have signed or going to sign a letter of intent, is that correct?
We already did, and we are working on, working in like contracts, so next week, next week, our attorney soon finalized contract, and we will sign the contract, and we continue forward on start, like secure our flag and working on that side.
And I'll ask one more question. As far as the letter of intent, you know, and I saw the whole layout of all the projects, looks like, I didn't count the buildings, how many different buildings? Is that 268 apartments? It looked like maybe 12 or so?
That came to us this morning when I was in the airplane, and so, you want to go back to that?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Go back to it, David.
There we go.
Okay, well, that's the leasing center there, as you firstly come in off of Chestnut.
Maybe 15 of them?
15, yeah.
15?
15. Okay, I guess what my question is, I think it's, and this I just don't understand, so maybe you can help me. If you sign a letter of intent, and maybe Karen or Patrick can help me out too, if you sign a letter of intent, I think what council would, or at least I am interested in, to know that that just doesn't sit there as a, with a letter of intent, but doesn't get built. Is that, and I don't know, we don't have any control over that in all probability, but what we want to see, I think, is the council, is it built? And so, how do we, how do we protect ourselves, or how does the town protect itself, from saying, we don't want to, we don't want to, you know, a, you know, a flat area out there that's concrete that just never gets, that doesn't get done, and we get all this done, and we don't get the hotel? I think what the council wants, and I could be wrong to say this, but I think what we want to see, a hotel go either at the same time or first, and I may be wrong or right to say that.
He said it would probably be first, right?
Did you say that? It would be first, okay.
Yeah, this would be first before that.
All right, well, then I'll shut up, then, I'm done.
Any more question?
Is that noted in the contract that we signed, or the letter of intent, that that would be first?
Y'all, the town would probably not, the town would have nothing to do with the transaction between those two parties. By the time this gets back to the town, this will all be taken care of. But that's, by the time, in the event it goes forward, by the time you all see this again, we'll know which way is going, you know, we'll have more information.
Because I know they want, they want to get some kind of answer from us, and in turn, we want to make sure that it's done.
Let me try to bring some clarity to this. So, councilors, from standpoint, we are not going to go forward with this project and file for a rezone unless we have a contract with Panera or another hotel operator that provides a flagship that's up to us. Obviously, this is the front door, we're related to this, and we want a quality development. That's just our history, and that's just our values, so that's what we're committed to. We are buying the property from two different sellers, and so, we're going to take down the whole parcel, and I can tell you that Mr. Panera will be responsible for doing the hotel development. We're not talking to anybody else at this point, but I want to make absolutely clear that we're not going to be able to guarantee what he does, but we have all the confidence in the world, because as we've interviewed developers, his connections, both to this community, his commitment, his operating history has told us, he has the right product for us to move this forward. It's our full intention for him to go first, but I will tell you, we're pretty good at what we do, and we're going to be moving full speed ahead, quite honestly, because time is money in our business, and we want to be up and renting people. So, it really is, I can assure you that we will sell the property to him. I can't give you assurances from the Sterling side, when and what he'll do and how it'll be done, because part of it is market conditions, as you know, and so, I am committed that he'll have a lot of money at risk and be incentivized to get it done, but I don't know how we could either one guarantee the other one will go first or second, because he's going to have different engineers, different approval processes. Marriott, Hyatt, Hilton, I've done work in those areas, I can tell you, they're going to go at their pace. They don't have a lack of suitors right now, they're very well sought after, so they may go a little slower than we go, or they may go faster, but I understand what you're telling me. Our intention is, is that we will take down the parcels, he'll take down the hotel parcel, we'll take the apartment project, and we'll move as fast as possible.
Sure, Mr. McCarter.
I have a few questions. If we can go back to the first slide, please. All right, so, back up one, right. Where on here, is there any way you can identify the creek you were talking about? Because when I looked at the structure, at the 15 or 18 units, I didn't see that on there. Is there, are you moving that, is that...
Okay, do you see the, oh, here we go. Right here is what I refer to as a creek. Sometimes you can see it, sometimes it's under a lot of underbrush, but I went and looked at today, there's a little water retention right in here, and then it's very clearly visible back here.
All right, can you identify on your map where 74 is for me, please?
Right here.
Okay, great, so I have that, all right.
Here's Chestnut.
Okay, so, when I looked at your, the first, the first slide, the hotel, where the hotel was, is different than where this is, in terms of it was closer kind of to the retail, the shaded portion of the top left?
Go back to the aerial.
Yeah. Why is it not going back?
Keep pressing left.
Oh, that's yours. I was in the next slide, I apologize.
All right. So, well, you can go to the next slide, that way it's bigger. So, the future retail is there.
This is the existing Walgreens, this is the existing Taco Bell.
Right.
And so, this is oriented a little differently than what the colored site plan is, but the hotel is going to run parallel to this property line.
So, it's not running parallel to 74?
It's not.
Okay.
And this stream, if I can just show you on here, runs, it comes across, kind of comes across, kind of comes down, and then, if you remember, on Indian Trail, there's like a dip in here. You can see the stream in here, and it's really flooded right in there, very low.
All right. I have a couple more questions, and then I'll pause for a bit.
Please take your time.
You mentioned that you, there's 268 units, right? And you want to, you will build and own them?
Yes.
And then, you've built about 45,000 units?
25,000.
25,000 units, but you only have 8,000 under management, which means that, are you planning to kind of turn this over in the next few years? Because if you build 25 and you have eight, that means there's about, what, 17 that turned over?
Well, they go through cycles.
Okay.
And so, for the past six years, we've been selling as much as we've been building, because quite honestly, the market is at an all-time high. So, we've dropped from 12,000 units just three years ago to about 8,000 now, and it's just the way, now, we'll build back up. We, we don't like operating at eight, we want to operate always between 10 and 12 at a minimum, but we're, you know, but, but we're like anybody else, we're going to always have our management company, they have to have a platform for our employees.
Yeah.
So, but if someone comes and makes you an offer, sometimes you can't refuse.
I understand that totally. On your units, will they have a garage? I know you showed pictures of a garage.
50, I won't say 54 was the number that will. Remember, this is preliminarily.
Yeah, no, I understand, it can change, I mean, and we're just trying to get an idea of the concept, right?
No, 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 I've got the numbers here, because I told them to run them. Why am I not?
I think you're going the wrong direction.
Oh, there it is. Stop. 54 of the units will have attached right in of them, okay? That means that you drive in and you walk right in the...
Yeah.
36 of them will be detached covered, and the balance of them will be provided by...
Parking spaces, open spaces.
Parking spaces that are open to the air.
All right, and...
And that number could change. That's based upon our study on how many current residents in the area want garages and how many don't. Obviously, a unit with an attached garage is more expensive than one that isn't.
So, just one last point, and I'll turn it over. In regards to the hotel, one of the things is, based on the sporting events that we have, the sporting facilities within the town, Indian Trail is a destination, right? 74 is being worked on, hopefully be complete in the next couple months. We have the bypass being worked on as well, and we don't have a hotel in the town, so that's a big priority for council, and hopefully, residency, family comes in to visit for sports, birthdays, weddings, whatever you have. We want them to be able to stay and, you know, stay in Indian Trail. So, the hotel is of great interest to us, but the concern that we have is, if we go ahead and we say, yes, we like this, let's go ahead with it, I know you can't guarantee anything in regards to your partner on the hotel, but the thing is, we want to make sure that it gets built. May not, you know, we want, we don't want it sitting there being vacant, whereas we have a nice shiny apartment building people like, and then we still don't have the hotel. And we mean, we, that's just the, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not asking you a question, I'm kind of just reinforcing the point that Congressman Coon was making in regards to the hotel. We want to make sure that, we want to ensure that the town, the residents of the town do get the benefit of a hotel being in town, not just from a revenue standpoint, but also from an accommodation standpoint as well.
That message has been clear to my organization from day one. I can work with Ms. Walters, I mean, this is not our first time we've been confronted with the situation. What we can tell you is, is that if you zone it for a hotel, we will actively market it as a hotel, and if for some reason Mr. Panera would not move forward, I will tell you, we will actively market it. We have actually granted to municipalities, and I think we could talk about this here, a right of refusal or an option, if you wanted to get involved, and you feel we are doing it actively enough, that you could get involved. The only reason a hotel wouldn't go there is just because of market conditions don't justify it. People aren't going to build a $45 million project if it's going to be, if they're going to lose money on it.
Right.
That's not the market right now, but I can tell you, eight years ago, that was the market. It turns quickly. So, we are committed, through the zoning, we know that it'll be, only be allowed for hotel development, we'll commit, like I said to you, that it'll be actively marketed that way, we'll give you, I'm sure we can come up with some protections that can make you happy. The only thing I can have happen is, I can't spend $1 million and then have to walk away because my hotel developer walked away, but I will tell you, as a representative, not only the Senior Vice President, the General Counsel for the company, that we can work that out, and, you know, I've been, your strategy is very similar to the strategy in my home state, Westfield, Indiana. If ever you want to take something, just pull up Grand Park, and you'll see that they have a very similar concept going on in Westfield. They sold their utility, they privatized it, took all the money, $20 million, and they've created ball fields, they have an indoor facility, they have for, a huge one that's for tennis, soccer, and lacrosse, and then they have a separate one for basketball on the, on the site. And it is a first-class facility, it draws, Nike's there, Under Armour's there, Adidas there, I know it very well, and, you know, it's a, I love the philosophy. They are also pursuing hotels. They now have gotten, just recently, Hampton Inn was completed, and the second one just got started, the Marriott Suites. I get it, but in those circumstances, they had to build first, and then they shall come, because no one wants to build a hotel with no users. You've got the sports facilities, I will tell you that, you know, we're very comfortable that that is a good hotel site, but I, but I can't, we don't do hotels, I wish we did, but we don't. But I will tell you this, it will be actively marketed and pushed all the way, we, we don't need that parcel for our development, we're not going to develop it, and we'll do whatever's necessary to provide you whatever assurances are reasonable.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a, excuse me, just a couple questions. What is the overall timeline for this? Let's say that you walked in here tomorrow, and it was already rezoned and ready to go, what kind of timeline to build the apartments, what kind of timeline for the developer of the hotel, and if he's, you know, not performing, or you don't come to an agreement with the hotel that he can bring forward, then when would you look at someone else?
Well, for us, I would tell you that we'll start renting units within eighteen months. That's our typical structure, weather permitting, you know? Um, and that's assuming that we don't run into any rock or anything like that we have to blast, which, you know, we have had those issues, and we've, quite honestly, last summer was a pretty wet summer in this area. Uh, and so, we had some delays. But usually, I will tell you, it's eighteen months from when we put the shovel in the ground. With the winter coming up, my hope is that we would close on this property in December, January, and we'd be out of the ground as soon as weather permitted, which hopefully down here is February, March. Um, and so, it'll take eighteen months from there. But remember, what we do, and if you wanna see something very similar, the Mallard Creek is being built right now off of Mallard Creek Road, that's our project, the ascent. And, um, you can go there and see that when we, we turn buildings, and assuming that your inspectors will allow us to pull occupancies on building, permits on a building per building business, we'll start letting, renting buildings as soon as they are occupiable, and there's a buffer between them and the buildings are still being constructed. So, there's always a row. So, we'll probably start leasing before that, um, but eighteen months is the typical timeframe for us, for a project of two hundred and sixty-eight units. Um, and weather permitting, some landscaping and other things may go in. If you've ever built a house, you know how those things affect you. Um, so that's, that's for the apartments, um, and that's the schedule we're on and hope to keep.
Mr. Panera?
The hotel, the hotel, we usually do it in twenty-four months to the thirty months from those, from the day one after we get a flag. It's a one-year it takes between us and the, like, franchise to do the architecture, design, and everything, and work with you guys on, and city, city, city planning and joining. So, the construction, usually we start, like, after the twelve month. And depends on market. Right now, is the market is very tight, we cannot find contractor to work. So, like, but usually it takes like a, one year to build after we start, after we start the construction. And sometimes, if it's weather, or like franchise got something, we cannot work with city or that. Like maximum, in like Tennessee, we, we open every project in like twenty-four months. Like after we sign the contract with land. So, it's two year.
And what do you feel is the acceptable amount of time for him to, to get, you know, find a flagship and to start building the hotel?
Well, it'll be done in stages. They'll be putting money down at certain thresholds, which, you know, will, so, after they get their initial due diligence done, they'll have to put money down. Um, my guess is that we'll, we'll take down that entire parcel ourselves, assuming it's already zoned. And my guess is then, no more than nine to twelve months, we're gonna want them either to close, or we're gonna go, you know, we'll have to go elsewhere. I mean, we're, we're reasonable, but we're not gonna be taken advantage of. Uh, this is a business for us. Uh, we've been around for a while. Um, this is not the first time. Um, and we, we understand the importance of it, and, you know, we, we wanna be a good part of the community.
Something y'all mentioned, um, the flooding concern down there by Indian Trail Road. And this might be more for Patrick, but a development like this, how will that impact that present flooding as it is?
They, they will have onsite retention, detention, whatever it takes. So, the engineering design will take care of that. It will not be dispersing any water, or discharging any water from the impervious area to the creek. It will be controlled by devices.
As a general rule, the rate of discharge and the amount of discharge will be no greater than it is in its natural watershed. So, we can't, our experience is, and you know, this is the thing, is, you know, when people talk about apartments, some people have a negative connotation. We typically have invoked that. But one of the biggest things is, you're gonna ruin our environment, ruin our flooding. The bottom line is, we typically improve drainage because we, we've got a significant investment there, and we have lenders that are first-rate, they're not gonna allow us to develop something that's gonna flood. But the rule is, we aren't gonna get our permits unless we have figured out a way to engineer this so that we are not discharging water, any, a greater quantity at a greater rate than currently exists today. My experience has been, is if you have some fight, some, uh, some flooding, our engineers will work together to help alleviate that, because we do have some flexibility where we put our retention, detention bonds.
Yeah, it's a, it's a local and state law, and they don't get the permit without making sure that, and we will review that too.
I would just like to add a, a couple of things. Um, once again, my name is David Niekamp. Um, I own a small commercial real estate firm. And it's kinda my job to assist both Sterling and the apartment development, and assist Mr. Panera in the hotel parcel. And I was active, involved in the negotiations of the deal. And one of the things that Patrick, uh, really conveyed to me is, is Dave, we'd like to see Sterling get that, that property prepped for hotel. And so, as part of the negotiations, Sterling has agreed, as part of their construction, to, uh, fill and compact a minimum of two acres for the hotel pad. And if any of you haven't seen the site, I encourage you to go out there and see how it drops off there. It's, it's very, very to, topography challenged, it's, it's a tough site. There is, there's a stream there, there's wetlands, and there's some flooding there. And my point of saying all this is, is a couple, couple of things. One is, they're buying, one of the two tracts is around twenty-one acres. So, that hotel parcel's not a separate parcel. So, when Sterling closes on the large parcel, they're gonna control that hotel parcel. It's not like they're gonna lose control of that where somebody else can get it and, and put something else in other than a hotel. So, um, I think that's, that's a huge benefit for, for the city, that they control it, they control the destiny of getting a hotel there. And they're gonna fill two acres of, of compacted fill, lift, they do it by lifts. It's very expensive to, to keep the, uh, the structure from settling in, in the future. And they're also willing to stub in water and sanitary sewer to, to that parcel. So, it's basically gonna be pad-ready. So, if something happened to my, my dear friend, Mr. Panera, and, and he sells all of his hotels in Tennessee, and goes to the Bahamas, we, we'll have somebody else that will be ready to go to, uh, to take that hotel parcel. And, um, through our, through our discussions with the town, and, and they've, they've been very good to work with, staff, uh, city manager, et cetera, is, uh, we've been told Extreme Ice is very, very, uh, in, in need of a, of a hotel nearby. And so, I contacted Extreme Ice a couple of weeks ago, spoke to, uh, Mike Mulhall, am I saying his name correctly? Um, and he said, as an example, um, he was having a tournament down at his ice rink where they had twelve teams and fifty players, uh, per team. So, that was about six hundred total participants. And he's not a hotel guy, but he said he estimated that that would need about sixty to a hundred hotel rooms for just, just that event. And I said, well, where, where's, you know, where are they staying now? He's like, well, some stay in, in Matthews, some stay down in Monroe, and then some may go over to Ballentine. But he said, listen, if there was a hotel here in this town, they would stay there because, you know, parents don't wanna have to drive a long distance. There's restaurants near you, and, and quite frankly, they, they'd all, they'd all go to you. And so, we're also talking to, to the city parks and rec to get a, a good estimate on hotel room nights as well, both with Carolina Courts and your other facilities here in town. And I can tell you, from being in Charlotte twenty-one years, doing commercial real estate, that we, we have the ingredients here, lack of a better term, for a good hotel location with having the, the sports complex here, the road network here. When I say the road network, I'm talking about US seventy-four, the new bypass coming in, four eighty-five. And quite frankly, we're, we're running, we're running out of land. Um, if I'm a hotel developer, and I don't wanna put words in, in Salish's mouth, and I don't wanna take anything away from this wonderful town, is if I'm a hotel developer, I might go to Matthews first to look for a site, but there's, there's no sites there. And so, at some point, you start looking at other sites. And what, one of the nice things with the Monroe bypass is that you, you will have pretty much limited access ninety-nine percent of the way to, to the hotel location. And hotel people like quick, be able to get down there because of the bridges they're building. So, you can get off four eighty-five, take, take all the bridges on the new bypass. It's gonna be the, the free part, and then at the very end, you'll have that exit there, and the hotel will be, be right there facing, facing that, that traffic. So, uh, I'm, I'm optimistic that we'll have a wonderful development here, and, uh, I, I believe in, in both these, uh, developers. And did you wanna add anything about the hotel, the room nights, or anything?
Couple of questions. Will Mr. Panera be willing to work with the sport facilities like Carolina Courts or Extreme Ice on, on rates and stuff like that for a large number of people?
Yes, we do it in corporate rates, so usually, like, the, well, the hotel business right now is mainly, if you have a contract with those kind of things, that's over this, it, it is quality in like a lock revenue. Like, we want at least forty percent revenue from like a cabin port, or ice rink, or swimming, swimming facility, or any business. And we love, we always, always do the contract with them. And we do have a, like, sales, salesperson, and as soon as we start building, they start working on their side. And we do every March, we sign the contract with the, with the company. Even like Eristate or Everton Headquarters over here, like distribution center, we're gonna contact them, so, like, uh, like many of them, because the, today's market, we do not depend on people pulling into our hotel. We need to sell the room. And we do have a, every hour of the property, we have a salesman, sales manager, and then we, we do the marketing, plus we do the contact, and we do everything to sell. I would not invest this much money if it depends on four eighty-five, somebody taking exit and pulling into my hotel. Actually, in today's like market, fifty-five percent bookings is, comes online. And it's very, very few people walk in and ask for room rate. Sometimes, sometimes customer in parking lot from their, their phone, but they book through online. So, that's what is marketing now.
Thank you. Just one last question. Uh, what is the construction type? The wood frame, concrete, slab?
It depends on which flat we get.
Okay, and...
So, like, for example, Hampton, Hampton got it in two kind of, two kind of the structure. If you do only Hampton Inn, it's gonna be wood. But if you do the Hampton Inn and suite, it's like require, require the metal.
Different, okay.
So, it depends on which, which product we approve.
Thank you.
Questions? That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the opportunity. Hope we can work together in the future.
Yep.
Thank you.
Seven minutes. Thank you, everyone. If you please put your cell phones on.
Good.
Unvibrate. Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council Meeting for Tuesday, October ninth, two thousand and eighteen. At this time, everyone will please rise. My allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our law.
You remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated. At this time, is there any additions or deletions? Mr. Coen?
Would like to add eight D budget amendment.
To the consent agenda?
Yes. Eight D.
Eight D budget amendment for two hundred and seventy-seven, two eighty.
I see it.
Allocate funds for payoff of administrative services, building debt. Okay, are there any others, or any objections? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the amended...
It's removed.
Mr. Morse made the motion. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, it's presentations. There's a Community Planning Month proclamation, which I should be reading. There we go. Excuse me for a second. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, villages, and counties, and whereas community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved, to make choice in, in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse the National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environment. And whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning boards and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the town of Indian Trail. And whereas we recognize many valuable contributions made by professional community and regional planners of the town of Indian Trail and Union County, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now therefore, be it resolved that the month of October, two thousand and eighteen, is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the town of Indian Trail in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. Thank you. That brings us to... Thank you. Working with nonprofit organizations. Mr. Sadek, I yield the floor to you, sir.
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, every once in a while, I received some inquiries about donations, and, uh, the last one I received, it was in regard to having a performance art center here in, uh, in Indian Trail. But, uh, since we allocate little amount of money in our budget, approximately, approximately about three thousand dollars, that put us in the informal process, the two process by the school of government. One of them is a formal, which is a very lengthy process that involves council, citizen groups, staff, that it costs a lot of money. And sometimes, it's not worth it to have that process if we only allocate a few thousands of dollars. But our process is informal, and the final decisions is, uh, for council to make. And, uh, sometimes it's easy, you could do it here in, in the chamber without doing a lot of analysis and, and looking into, uh, different areas. But, uh, I felt that, uh, go ahead and have this small presentation, kinda give you an idea about the, the difference between the two processes. But I eliminated the long process because it's, it's lengthy one. I tried to do it within three, four minutes, but I thought it'd be worth it to go over it with you. Uh, simply on this slide, uh, every municipality tried to increase involvement with nonprofit. There are a lot of challenges out there, mainly the money and the fiscal, uh, constraints. Uh, definitely, you have to include the, the nonprofit in the service delivery. Preferably also, to include volunteer and private financial resources. Uh, the, the nonprofit is all the time is skilled advocates for their clients, so, you, you have to be picky about who to work with. And also, the entire process should address, uh, public needs. And it should also implement public service programs. Uh, why fund nonprofit? You know, public funds should be spent only on public purposes. It's like any other item that we have on the approved budget. Uh, mainly to better the community and provide specific programs or services. And then also, contract with nonprofit can be done. And the last thing, which is, uh, try to increase the impact of public expenditure. So, there'll be something in addition to our, uh, budget. Uh, this one right here is tips for, for deciding whether to fund nonprofits or not. Uh, you have to look at the stuff that nonprofit can. Uh, they need to supplement public funds, move, more flexibility. You have to have more flexibility than us, and they do. Uh, kinda build a sense of partnership with the community, and, uh, definitely provide the specialized expertise that staff and, and the town don't have sometimes. Well, how can the, the nonprofit augment and, and complement and fill the gap? Uh, the questions that we need to ask is, what's our experience with, uh, working with a nonprofit? What has worked well for us in the past? What could be improved? And how is the nonprofit perceived in the community? Uh, there are different ways of, of providing nonprofits funds. Uh, we could do it like any other purchase of services. Sometimes, it's through grants that require a promise, and requires a lot of reporting and accounting. And this falls under the formal process, the linkeding process. Uh, what we do right now falls under appropriation, which is, we take an amount of money and put it in the adopted budget. And there are other kinds of, uh, support. It goes from allocating property. Let's say, this group that approached us in regard to the Performance Art Center, you know, if they're willing to spend about eight, nine million dollars, maybe that's something we could bring to council to see if council decide to contribute, uh, a piece of property that the town owns. Uh, there are some legal issues there, and I think Karen could help me on some of those. But, uh, you know, it, whatever money we spend, it has to be for public ser, purpose. And public purpose is, if you look at our budget, all those itemized lines on our budget is, we spend on public purpose, so it has to be similar to that. So it has to be similar to that and also has a statutory authority to engage. Our local government does and we have to be consistent with the law. What is public purpose? I'd like to go ahead and give these two a reasonable connection with the, with the convenience and necessity of the local government. And the second item, the activity benefits the general public as opposed, should be opposed to special interest persons' religious purpose. Again, the statutory authority and then it talks a little bit about contracting with More legal issues is the contract limitation, not best use for worship services, sectarian instruction, and both are not, both are not subject to the same standards. In regard to the contracting rules, it's the same rules. It could be done in-house or outsourced services. Definitely no conflict of interest of elected officials because it's unlawful and may local government donate the property as they can. Deciding to fund nonprofit, approach the issue, it has to be deliberate and get guidance when making tough decision. Questions again, what community council would like to service and what support to end fund? Determine the appropriate level of funding, how much money council sees that we need to put out there. Of course, that goes back to the knowledge in the different areas in town and compare the merits for funds is very, very challenging. And also how to allocate scarce public funds among so many worthy efforts and how to engage in a fully impartial and deliberate evaluation process. Looking at different groups, you've got the youth, the working people, the homeless, et cetera. And definitely competing political interest has to be taken into consideration, whether you want to fund the art community or economic, is it economic development or human services? Most of the human services is done by counties. Sometimes it's a little bit on the local level. Benefits has to be included. Formal process is the lengthy process. You need to identify community needs, obtain nonprofit proposals. Proposals, again, it belongs to the formal lengthy process. If it is that, if council decide, you know, they won't put twenty-five or fifty thousand dollars next year or the following years, definitely it will be the formal process and it has to be sort of like a proposal submittal deal. And that comes into staff and maybe citizen group that will review it and get back with council so council can make a decision. I guess I have a couple more slides. What does it benefit, what benefits do government officials seize in funding? You know, tie a specific or a large community goal, focus on large community goals rather than individual or specific people, rather than charity or gift, provide valuable community service. Local government might not want to fund nonprofits. Governments can provide the same service more effectively or less expensively. Prefer to devote resources to government department even if services are not effective or efficient. Devote staff time and attention to oversight, partnership with nonprofit. This one is fear making nonprofit depending on government funding. A lot of municipalities, from what I read, is that they try not, they don't, they try not to put a large budget out there because they found out that some, some nonprofits every year kind of depend on that funding. Want to cut spending instead of providing the service and rely on volunteers and supplemental grants from outside sources. Town council is ultimately responsible for making funding decision, adopted budget. The best way to do it is to have the, an adopted budget and subordinate groups to allocate funds town council authorizes. This is something that I read during the Florence hurricane that some, some people were having issues with donation. I think they donated some money to the wrong organization, so this is sort of like to make us aware, donation help those in need, choose charity. This is how you pick them. Choose charities you know, do not give the ones that called or just emailed, it might not be legitimate and do not feel pressured to give immediately legitimate ones, do not pressure. And research before you commit to giving money. And at the bottom, there are some areas, some organizations that you contact just to make sure that you're not giving your money to the wrong people. Any questions from council? I just felt that this is something that could help us out and kind of clarify a couple of things before council decides on, on who to fund and what nonprofit organization. But right now, our budget has only three thousand dollars and we try to stretch it until the end of the fiscal year.
Um, one question. You started off talking about there was a cost, a dollar cost for the process itself. Is that right?
Yeah, if, 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 this is mainly occurs to local governments that allocate a lot of money and the cost that I'm talking about, Michael, is the staff's cost.
Staff cost, okay.
Participation of citizen group, et cetera, et cetera. So if you take all that cost, you know, sometimes it could, yeah, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, that, that'll come out of the thirty thousand dollars that you allocate.
Marcus?
Um, since the start of the new fiscal year, how many requests have you received from nonprofits?
Probably about three. They asked the question is like how much budget and, and what does the town usually allocate to nonprofits, separate nonprofit? And one is the performing arts center that came in recently.
All right, but they haven't, nobody's really asked, can I get, or no nonprofit has asked whether they can get any of the three thousand, right? They just asked what the budget was so that they could go back and refine the ask, I guess.
Yeah, I usually, council member McIntyre, I usually, I just tell him what we allocate because that's in the budget, that's public information. But I usually don't go specific on how much because that's a council's decision. So if council decides to split the three thousand dollars or make it, split it six ways or whatever, so I try not to share that information with people that have inquiries. Only thing I share is that we, we do give funding to nonprofits and the budget, which is three thousand dollars.
But nobody's asked you for any of that money yet?
No, sir.
Okay.
Settle? Any other questions? Thank you, Patrick. That brings us to public comments. I will close the public comments since, open and close them since no one's signed up and move on to Captain Cobble for the law enforcement update. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I passed out just before the meeting got started, a couple of pages. We, I was telling David earlier today, we've got a new software system that I'm still trying to learn. So everything that we normally keep track of in our head, like crime trends and things like that, we're now doing and getting that out of a box with a keyboard attached to it. So I'm a little bit outdated, so I'm working on it. But this is what I punched out today, just, just did a quick question, I guess to myself is in the past two weeks, what have we been looking at? And so on the second page, I just did a north side and a south side bar graph of the types of crimes that we've had in the past two weeks, split up by the day of the week. And then I can drill down even further by the hour a day and things like that. So, you know, some of those things, we used to go back and hand calculate and all, and now we're able to, to get those. Once I can get the, the computer box there to listen to me when I yell at it, it'll spit out these reports and tell me, you know, it'll help us on staffing. So just wanted to give you a little bit of sample of some of the stuff that we're learning right now and some of the tools that we're using. So just like in the past two weeks right here, we can look at that, that first graph shows the north side. Tuesday and Wednesday was our biggest days for actually criminal reports that were taken or incident reports that were taken. And then on the south side of the town, past two weeks, Friday and Sunday's been our, our busiest day for, for activity reports and stuff going on. Now that's, that's not necessarily our busiest day, but that's the busiest day for actual legitimate crimes that have happened.
Where do you draw? Is it independence the?
So the, the line runs pretty much on the railroad tracks.
Okay.
So the north side encompasses what I call our business district. And I've got aspirations one of these days to, to take seventy-four corridor and make it a central business district so that we can really have, have it split evenly. But right now, we just went to two zones last year and working through that. But that's, so the north side's always going to inherently be a little bit busier because of the seventy-four corridor in there. So then going back onto the front page, the, just kind of a couple of things noteworthy in the past couple of weeks. We did have a robbery at Firehouse Subs again this past week and we feel certain that's connected to the previous robberies that we had several months ago. And so I was talking to Cody today and a couple of investigators are obviously working on that and they've got some pretty good leads that they're running down right now. But then this past Saturday, we had some deputies working at the town event over here across the road. Then I went back in and broke down and, and came up with a chart on the types of incident reports by type for the past two weeks. So I'll just read these real quick to go through them. So on the north side of town, we had eleven thefts in the past couple of weeks and ten of those I thought was noteworthy to mention to you that those were at Walmart. So that's our, our biggest customer over there. Six break-ins, one vehicle theft, two fraud reports, one residential break-in, one vandalism report, eight assault reports, three alcohol and narcotics related incidents. In total, all types of reports, including the ones that I had right up above there, total we have fifty-two reports generated from the north side of town in the past two weeks. And then from the south side of town, we had three theft reports, two vehicle break-ins, one motor vehicle theft, four fraud reports, one residential break-in, two vandalism, seven assault, two narcotic and alcohol related incidents, with a total of thirty-seven to include all types of reports that were taken. So just to, to read into the record and clarify, some of you have heard this a thousand times, that's not all the calls for service. That's the, we get out there and David calls and says, hey, my, my gas grill got stolen and I'm mad about it, I want you to come out here. And we get out there and we figure out that he put it in his garage and closed the door and he remembers it or golf clubs or something. And that happens a lot. But you know what? I'd rather get out there and say, you know what, I lose my mind sometimes too and have a good day. So sometimes we get out there and there was not a break-in and there was not a theft. And so we, we may have, you know, twenty break-in reports and then we only have two or twenty calls for service break-ins and then we only have two or three actual legitimate break-in reports. So I try to really stress that those aren't the, the service levels because we still have to get out there and look and, and go talk to him before we figure out what's truly happened. So getting out of that bottom then, that really gets you to your service request levels or your service levels here in town. So this includes everything, traffic stops, self-initiated activities like business checks, preventative patrols, traffic complaint patrols in neighborhoods, and the calls for service all combined. So we call those events. And so on the north side of town, the past two weeks, we have one thousand seventy-six events that were logged into our system and on the south side, five hundred and fifty-one events. So those can be affected by a lot of things. And the good example that I'll use is everybody knows Chestnut Lane's open back up now, but during the time that they were closed, we, meaning me and Patrick and Todd and town staff, were getting a lot of complaints and a lot of, lot of communication coming back and forth from some neighborhoods that were being used to cut through traffic to avoid the detour, to use the detour there to go around where Chestnut was closed, which in turn meant that we had to, to put our traffic cars out there a lot more to answer those complaints and try to get the visibility up in that neighborhood that normally is not there, but all of a sudden, hey, a major road or major thoroughfare on that side of town was closed, so they became the new thoroughfare for everybody. And now that the roads got opened back up, then you know, that'll diminish down and the request will move over to somewhere else. So sometimes it's like paying, playing chess where you're moving your pieces all over the table there. But the, speaking of Chestnut, I did want to give a shout out to Dellinger Incorporated. I had told Patrick back whenever they first started this thing, those guys communicated with us. It's probably the fastest I've ever seen a government contract actually, you know, get written, get done, and I'm part of government, so I can kick us. But you know, that's, sometimes we slow down the process a lot, but they, DOT put that out for bid on a Monday morning. It was awarded Monday afternoon and they moved equipment in on Tuesday morning. We met with them on the site out there, swapped telephone numbers and email addresses and the, the guy that was the supervisor over the site crew was texting me every couple of days with pictures and updates and answering questions for us on the size of the pipe that they were putting back in. I believe they took out a fifty-five and put in a eighty-three size pipe. So they upgraded the, the system while they were out there for capacity, but you know, they were, they were working left and right and, and those guys were out there on nine and ten o'clock at night working. And you know, originally they had scheduled for it to be opening yesterday in the afternoon hours. And whenever they heard that we had been getting a lot of phone calls and requests from the neighborhood about the traffic cut through, the guy reached out and shook my hand and said, well, I'll give you my handshake commitment that we'll try to do the best we can to get it open early. I think it was five days early that they opened up on. So I got to say that he did that for the community and, and you know, they stood by their word and those guys worked late and put in extra hours to get that done. So I'd be amiss not to give them a shout out and a thank you for what they did over there in that, that part of town. So any questions? And it's going to rain this week, so. That's my weather report. Thank you, guys.
Chase, Patrick has a question.
Do you, with, with the hurricane coming and sixty mile per hour wind and it's wet out there, do you anticipate any?
So we've been getting a few briefings from our emergency management on what to expect right now. You know, they're doing what we're doing, just watching the weather. But I did talk to Mike Wright today and we just kind of got a game plan in our head for, you know, how we may approach it. The good thing is, is I don't think we're going to see a stallout and, and us sitting around here waiting on the ballgame to start like last time. But hopefully whenever it comes, it's going to come on time and, and it looks like it's going to be a daytime event to where we're all going to be here anyway. But Mike and I communicated about, you know, if we get trees down and things like that, then what we might be able to use the town staff for, public works wise machinery and everything to, to help us out with. We do know it's a lot softer ground and from talking to Mike and the public works guys, it's softer ground right now than what we had a couple of weeks ago whenever it had the winds coming in. So we're apt to lose some trees, you know, but we'll just kind of have to wait and see. The last weather report I saw, it was, it was going to diminish by the time it got up here from the category where it was then. So it's got a lot of land to travel over this time, so hopefully, hopefully it'll take its toll on the storm, so.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
How many people actually, how many calls do you get that people forget they put the grill in the garage? They don't ask those reasons I'm asking.
Well, you got to tell me the reason why and then I'll answer, but.
It's happened to me. And no, but just very quickly, I couldn't help the story. Last week I, I was fortunate enough to play in a golf tournament, Carmel member guest golf tournament. And, and I was there in the morning session, they have an afternoon session, very nice club, so. Anyway, I get in my car, I'm leaving in the afternoon and there's a pair of shoes, I said, I need to take these shoes back in there and exchange them that they had given them. So I exchanged them, went shopping, bought my wife a few things, walked back out in the parking lot and my car's not there. And I look and I look and I look for my car. I hit my little button and nothing's happened. Now it's two thousand thirteen Toyota. And for the life of me, I cannot figure out why somebody would want to steal a two thousand thirteen Toyota out of the Carmel parking lot, those Mercedes's and all of these other cars there. So finally, I could, I start to call the police. I'm down there ten minutes, I see that. So as I'm walking back up to the clubhouse, I'm dialing, try to file it to police. And I run into my car because I had forgotten, I had forgotten I had got in my car and drove it up to the clubhouse to get out, to go in. And so I was worried, how often does that happen? Because I, I hope it happens to other people.
It's never really happened before. No, it.
But I couldn't figure out why. I said, why would they steal my car?
So this was a member guest?
Yeah.
Wow. And you told that to everybody? No, it does. And Walmart's, Walmart's big for that. We get calls at Walmart and say, hey, my car's gone and, you know, you didn't park on row six, you parked on row two. And they blend in during the middle of the day when there's a lot of cars out there. But we do, I've, I've had, you know, the wife put the golf clubs in the, in the back of the Tahoe and drove off and went to work and husband went out to go play golf, couldn't find his golf clubs and for whatever reason, he forgot that they were in there. And we've, we've had a little bit of everything, but like I said, that's just a good examples that I, yours would be a good example. Had you made that phone call, then Charlotte would show a nine-one call for a larceny of motor vehicle, the officer would have got out there and scratched his head and laughed at you and then left. But, but then there would have been no crime report for a larceny of motor vehicle. So if you're looking at it from, from two different ways that you look at it, it looks like, you know, a lot of motor vehicles are getting reported stolen. Well, no, the reality of it is this is how many reports get taken. So I appreciate your example. I may remind you of that later on and use it again.
Don't leave, don't leave one, one question.
Yes, sir.
There is kind of almost double of the events on the, on the north side versus the south side. And there is fifteen more, I guess, incident reports over on the north. I know Walmart has ten of those, so we'll take off seven to be equal to Indian Trail South. But seems a lot more activity happening on the north side. I've sent Walmart, we don't have a lot of commercial over there, whereas on the south side of Indian Trail, you have a lot more commercial. Any insight into that or?
So not really.
Was hot or there was some barbecue or something over at David's house or something?
Not really. And to answer your question, Mr. Marcus, this, these things will change. I mean, I did a two-week snapshot just because it's been two weeks since we'd been here.
Yeah.
But I also went back and looked at monthly, weekly, and you know, for the past month and then for the past six. and then for the past six months, and then for the past year. So the day and the week thing are gonna be more of what the expectation for me is that the sergeant's back here will be using for, you know, when Sergeant Goggin comes to work and he's checking back in for the first day back on that shift for that two weeks, looking back over in the system to see what's kind of been going on in the, by the hours, so that he can say, well, hey, I need to put a couple of cars on the north side, one car on the south side, or I made three cars on the north side and one side, you know, one car on the south side or something. So for staffing for us, that's where we're gonna use that day of the week and the hour of day. Now, for the crime analyst part of it, that day of the week helps whenever you drill down to certain types of crimes. So for instance, right now, we've had a series on, in our area, of trailer thefts, and it's involving one particular type of vehicle, so we've been able to go in there with our crime analyst and do some predictions on not only the day of the week, the next time we're gonna have a trailer theft, but also what quadrant or what area of town, and then during what hour, so we can get that information out to the guys and say, hey, during these hours, make sure that you're looking for this particular type of activity going on in this particular type of setting, whether it be a commercial setting, whether it be a residential neighborhoods or what. So there's multiple uses that we can do with this, but as far as just with what's on here right now, I just took a clear snapshot. Normally, the north side of the town, since we drew the line at the railroad tracks, normally the north side is a lot busier with activity because of all of that 74 corridor, but I can't even say that any big-box retail store is gonna have more activity and more theft like Walmart, is gonna have more activity and stuff. And so when you look at the town itself, if you look at the town on that, and I go to a heat map of where our activity is, and go back for a six-month snapshot or a two-month snapshot, the area around Walmart is always red-hot, and then it gets the cooler colors around because that's where the most activity is. So we've actually gone in and tried to make it to where I can eliminate Walmart, turn Walmart off, and not factor it in, if that makes sense, because it is an eyeball, you know, of having an area like that. But it's not just our Walmart, because we've done comparisons to our Walmart, to other Walmarts around, we're in a lot better shape than they are, and we're still, you know, we've struggled with, you know, what our approach is at Walmart is, we try really hard, if we've got the staffing at the time, that if you commit a crime at Walmart, we're gonna arrest you. We're not gonna do like some jurisdictions and write you a ticket and let you go home. We're gonna carry you to jail, we're gonna tow your car, we're gonna cost you money out of your pocket initially, regardless of what the court system does, we're gonna make sure that you're missing a couple of hundred dollars from getting your car out of tow in storage and your bond money from having to post bond. And so we know that through the criminal element, we hear people say, don't go to Indian Trail Walmart. That ain't where they come to go shopping, so to say, because, you know, a lot of times these guys will take a chance and come down here, and whenever we catch them, then, you know, they were out there and had a foot chase and went across the parking lot today in the Walmart. And Chad Barbie, if y'all remember, Chad Barbie's the guy that ran from Wingate all the way to Charlotte. Okay, you probably get away from me and James back here, but Chad will run into Matthews and just be stopping at Dunkin' Donuts behind you to get a cup of coffee, but, you know, they were out there running one today, so it's a hotbed of activity. I think today, we had three different incidents going on at Walmart this afternoon, you know, pretty much simultaneous. So they were there the other morning, 5:00 AM in the morning with a larceny theft, and at 5:50, while they're still wrapping up and booking or getting that one taken care of, then they had somebody, a car parked out front in the fire lane, not many people in the store, and they get alerted by the loss prevention, hey, there's a guy in the back stealing. And guy in the back stealing, you know, came in the door, he got a marked patrol car parked right out front, and so, I mean, it's like this is just a haven for, but there, again, a lot of these people aren't from around here. We do get the ones from around here, but most of them are from somewhere else, and they come down to our big-box retail store thinking they're just gonna steal, and if they get caught, they'll just get a ticket and leave, and so we try to change their mind on that, so.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
That brings us to the consent agenda, I'll need a motion to approve. Ms. House made a motion to approve, all in favor. That passes unanimously. That brings us to public hearings, annexation A, ordinance number 1514814 Rogers Road. Wait, did I miss something?
Yep, yep. Item D.
That's part of consent agenda.
Right, yep, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was added, wasn't it?
Okay.
Yeah, but it's part of the consent.
Thanks for reminding, usually it is me that forgets.
I know, you usually just kind of raise fruit, let's go.
I've usually missed in things that they add. So Rocks, you're up, or, nope, sorry, you're not Rocks.
I'm the better-looking Rocks. No offense, Rocks. I'm kidding, kidding. All right, so, thank you, I'm Katie, and I will be presenting on the next three items.
Before we get started, I just have a curious question from sitting here all these years. All these are voluntary annexations, correct?
Yes.
And I know you're, I don't know how long you go through each one of them, but if they're all voluntary, is there a way to, do we still need to go through the same process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm just curious, because, of course, they're wanting it, and we want them, so.
Yes, sir. We have to go by the general statute process.
All right, I'll be curious.
Hey, if there were a shortcut, I'd work on that for you. Yes, sir. Okay. So this is an annexation project, but it's combined with a zoning map amendment, so I'll just be combining this presentation two into one. So the property in question is 4814 Rogers Road, and it's annexation number 151, as well as zoning map amendment 2018-0061. Location overview, you can see down at the bottom, the property is located off Rogers Road, you can see Wesley Chapel Road is highlighted with the yellow arrow. Here's a photo of the subject property, it is a single-family house. Overview and intent, it is a one-and-a-half acre parcel, it's currently improved with a single-family house. The only intent is to simply annex this into the town, the applicant does not wish to make any changes or improvements that would alter anything, so again, it's just simply to annex into the town in order to receive solid waste service from the town. The request is to annex in from unincorporated Union County, and that requires giving it a zoning district within the town. Currently, it's zone R20, which is residential, single-family residential, again, in unincorporated Union County, and the request would be to change that to single-family low-density residential, which is SF1 within the town. Here's a zoning map to give you an idea of the overview. Sorry that the circle shifted here, it should actually be a bit to the left. You can see the lightest shade there of yellow is single-family low-density residential, which is SF1. So again, that's the request here, so should this be approved, that would also be changed to the light-yellow color. The only other color showed here, shown here are just various shades of yellow, which just mean a higher-intensity residential district. This is, we of course look to the land use, future land use map within the comprehensive plan. This is in the Rogers Village, and this request would be consistent with the future land use map. Again, you can see the property, you can see the property circled off of Rogers Road, highlighted where Rogers Road is, and also 74 to give you a sense of direction. So again, since this is combined, I'm looking for, I'm just gonna break this down for the annexation and the zoning map amendment. So the annexation is consistent with the North Carolina general statutes, and staff does recommend approval. Regarding the zoning map amendment, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan in terms of quality of life and land use and housing. It is a reasonable request. The planning board recommended to approve it at their August 21st meeting, and staff does recommend approval. At this time, I will need to read the findings into record. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Quality of life goal number one, the proposed map amendment will maintain the unique identity in this area, which is predominantly characterized by the Meriwether and Windcrest residential neighborhoods. Land use and housing goal number one and two, the proposed map amendment will help further a wider range of housing options and different housing types in order to provide affordable living opportunities for residents by including individual homes in addition to planned communities. This rezoning request is reasonable and is in the public interest because it promotes the goals of the Indian Trail Comprehensive Plan in the areas of quality of life and land use and housing. It is consistent with the adopted plans within the town of Indian Trail. Again, based on consistency with the comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of this ordinance. So you'll have to take action for annexation process, so with that, we just simply need a motion, whether in favor or, in favor to approve it or deny it, and that, of course, is after you receive any public comments.
Any questions, counsel?
Any public comments?
You go first. That's the way we always done it. Any comments at this time?
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
This annexation request, is that a result of the town's efforts to go out and close donut holes, or did this person approach?
No, that has not kicked off yet. That has not kicked off. This came to my attention from Public Works. I believe the gentleman had been receiving solid waste service from the town, and we reached out to him, and he was interested in annexing in.
Jerry, that house had been vacant for many years and deteriorated, and had been for sale for a very long time. Someone purchased it, has been in the process of remodeling it, upgrading it, and I only assume that's why he's annexing. At this time, I'll open and close the public comments, since no one signed up to speak. Any further questions by counsel? So then we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve as presented, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to the zoning map amendment for the same property.
Yes, sir, thank you. So of course, receive any public comments if they have any, and first step would be to make a motion to accept the required consistency findings, which I read into record, and the second step would be a motion to approve, approve with modifications, deny it, or request more information.
Make the motion.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll open and close the public comments portion, since no one's signed up. Any questions by counsel? If not, we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve as presented.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve as presented, all in favor.
You have a question?
Oh, no, is this step one or step two?
Step one.
Thanks, ma'am.
Make the required consistency findings.
Make the consistency findings. Oh, excuse me. Make the, wanna correct the?
Yeah, make the required consistency findings as read into record by staff.
As stand corrected, Mr. McIntyre made the motion to accept the required consistency findings as read into record, all in favor. That's unanimous. Second motion?
Approve as presented.
Mr. McIntyre's made a motion to approve as presented, all in favor. Passes unanimously. That brings us to zoning text amendment.
Thank you.
ZT 2018-0076, amend Chapter 530 to allow additional uses for the village center overlay district. Ordinance number 296.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is zoning text 2018-0076. Again, it is, just as you said, it's involving Radiator Road property. Request is to amend Chapter 30 of the Unified Development Ordinance in order to permit additional uses either by right or with a special use permit. The requested uses are permitted within the light industrial district, but not within the village overlay. The intent is to expand the allowed uses in order to attract additional tenants. Here's a screenshot of the property. You can see the developed part of Radiator Specialty. Here's the railroad, here's Old Monroe Road, and then this property back here that's wooded is also Radiator Specialty, but of course, that's not developed. This is looking down Radiator Road, as if Old Monroe is behind you. This is just a closer bird's-eye view of the building and property site. So the request is to permit the following uses for buildings that are in existence as of September 1st of this year. This, the date of September 1st pretty much coincides with when the application was received. You can see a screenshot here that shows that the requests are for commercial greenhouse or nursery, construction storage yard, commercial laundry services, vehicle sales, storage and service, RV or boat storage, vehicle storage and towing, general industrial and recycling facilities indoors. If you look at the middle column, you can see that there's a P or an S. P means it would be permitted by right, S means it would require an SUP from the Board of Adjustment. Again, these are uses that are found in the light industrial district, but not within this overlay district, because this village was meant to be a little more conservative in nature because of the surrounding residential neighborhoods. But the applicant does not believe or is not saying that all of these uses are the intention of the request here, they just want to make them available to any applicants or end-users who would be looking to locate here. Again, here, we look at the future land use map within the comprehensive plan, I'm just looking to let you know, here's Old Monroe, and again, the railroad track, you can see Radiator Specialty. This property is unique in that it is shown in two villages, so the first is Sun Valley Village, where you can see it does show up as an employment or industrial use, and the second shows it beside, of course, the Harris Heater Distribution Center, and that, again, is the undeveloped portion, and that is within the US 74 corridor East Village. Looking at the zoning map, the property is zone light industrial, should also have that hatch over it that's shown down below, so again, that should have the white stripes on it. Yeah, maybe not, sorry, but it is purple to show that it's light industrial. So the recommendation here is that it, this request is consistent with, and it also promotes the goals of the comprehensive plan for land use and housing, and also economic development. We believe it is a reasonable request. It was recommended by the planning board at their September meeting, and again, staff would recommend approval of the requested uses for buildings in existence as of September 1st of this year. At this time, I will read the findings into the record. The proposed UDO amendment is consistent with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. Land use and housing goal number one, the proposed UDO text amendment will avoid potential land use conflicts between neighboring properties because the previously existing manufacturing use is compatible with the proposed future land use and nearby industrial and commercial villages. The amendment will also allow for the desired mix of uses within villages. Economic development goal number one, according, sorry, amending the light industrial village overlay district allowed uses will not only allow for the continued use of the property as a manufacturing facility, but will also allow for the expansion of uses on the property, thereby diversifying the local economy and providing more varied employment opportunities. This UDO ordinance amendment is in the best interests of the public because it promotes, because it provides goods to the community, yet it minimizes land use conflicts. Based on the consistency with comprehensive plan, staff does recommend approval of this ordinance. Do want to let you know that after you hold the, open and close the public comment session, the applicant is here if you have any questions for them, as well as myself. Thank you.
I'll close the public, open and close the public comments, no one has signed up to speak. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
What was the vote on that?
It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, counsel? No? If not, we will need two motions.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion. Like to make the required consistency findings as read into the record by staff.
Mr. Morse made the motion for the required consistency findings, all in favor. That would be unanimous. Second motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Mr. Head's made a motion to approve as presented, all in favor. That would be unanimous.
Thank you.
That brings us to old business, the litter contract. Adam, would that be you?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This should be really quick. If you remember earlier this year, January, February timeframe, if I'm remembering right, we did a litter campaign where we hired a third-party company, and they came in and picked up about 10 roads around town. We're starting to see litter starting to tick up a little bit again, so we're just kind of getting ahead of the ball this time with kind of doing the same 10 roads, it's kind of the main roads around town. If that's something counsel would like to do, the last time, contract was about $3,000, a little bit over that, but we would think, you know, it may be a little bit more, so that's why in the memo, we put $3,500, because we haven't even reached out to them yet or to anyone else. The second end of that is, Patrick had brought up one time before to y'all about potentially doing some of the no-littering signs. You see that say, like, if you litter, state law, you know, there's this much of a potential fine. Placing those in strategic locations around town. Those signs run roughly about $100 by the time you pay for the sign and the post and all that. And then we, with our forces, would go out and install them. So that's why there's two different things in the memo you got.
This litter collection is taking place on state roads, correct?
Correct.
Is the state responsible for refunding the amount of money incurred to the town? Or how does that work?
No. So the state, what they do, they actually, the company that we use is actually, the company that we used the last time is the same company that they use. But they only go out when they have the funds to do it. And right now, with other things, it's, when they prioritize things, it's on the very bottom of the list. It's not going to be something they're going to go out and do right now. So it's our municipality. If we wanted to look a certain way, they're going to kick that back to us. Same thing with cutting grass. You know, they only come five times a year and we could cut several locations every other week.
And just, I imagine it'll always stay a low priority if the municipality is picking up the cost for this. But as you say, we do live here.
Exactly.
We have to live with it.
I mean, just the other day on Union Villaney and Trail Road, the couple of bags that fell off of something. I don't know what they fell off of, but I saw it all over the road.
Counsel, the reason why we bring in this before your attention, this is not a budgeted item. The second thing is that we were very successful in cleaning those 10 roadways. So we had a lot of good feedback on that. So we just, in a way, this is FYI item, just to let you know. It was very good. We would like to do it. And we would like to install the signs too, because the signs will prevent probably a lot of people from littering. So it's just, this is for your information item. And funding that we use for this will be coming out of Adam's contingency.
Yeah, it comes out of the sanitation budget account, out of contingency. So.
This is not something we need to vote on?
No.
No? Okay. Any questions for Adam?
When is the last time we did it?
It was, I should have looked that up before. January, February, sometime. We were thinking probably maybe if we continue down this road, it may be something that we do annually or biannually every year as we see the need. If we start doing it and then put up the signs and people miraculously stop littering, then we won't have to do it. But I don't think that's going to happen, so.
When's the last time the state did it? Does anybody know?
They have a litter sweep that they do every, once a year. I don't remember when it is, but they have volunteers that do the work. So if they don't have enough volunteers, then they don't pick up in that area.
You know, one thing we probably ought to look at is to see, make sure we don't do one when they have, like, two months or a month after they have one to do. Maybe if we did one a year, we did it six months after they did it. And that way, you'd get a biannual.
Yep.
As you know, if we do it, they're not going to.
They'll stop doing it.
They won't do it. They'll just stop doing it.
Yep. Yes, sir. All right. Thank y'all.
That brings us to an item from last meeting, citizen of the quarter. Any recommendations other than the one that I presented? If council wishes to discuss this? Tim Woods. Counsel, discussion nominees, vote, table.
Does anyone have any other nominees?
I don't have one. And Tim is a resident of Indian Trail, right?
Yes, sir.
I have one, but not a resident of Indian Trail. So box it out.
I was in Ireland, right? Person probably lived in Ireland.
You want to just vote on it?
You want to make them, can, someone want to make a motion? Do you want somebody to make a motion there?
Either make a motion, kick it in, kick it out. It's up to you, council.
Go ahead, do it.
Do you guys need more time? I mean, there's one person we don't have.
We did this last week. Last two weeks ago.
Yeah. So I want to make a motion, and Mr. Mayor, to recognize Mr. Tim Woods as citizen of the quarter.
Mr. McIntyre has made a motion to recognize Tim Woods as a citizen of the quarter. All in favor? Motion passes. Patrick, get in touch with him.
Take care of that, sir.
Thank you. Next is board committee bylaws and revisions. Mr. Morse, did you want to take the lead on that?
Sure. Thank you. You know, we've been struggling in recent months, or since the beginning of my term, in filling our boards and committees, having any quorums and the whatnot. Specifically, public safety, I don't believe, has met maybe once this year, if at all. And transportation has only met once or twice. And so Patrick and myself and Mr. Head had a series of meetings and we've, and I'm going to let Patrick take credit for this. He put together this pretty much a five-page document that really scaled it down from about 70-page documents. You had different rules and procedures and duties and the whatnot for each different board. And a lot of it can be just summed up in general for each board. But one of the recommendations that we thought about was reducing the number, in most cases, from, and it varies, five-person boards to seven-person boards, down to, say, five voting members and one alternate. That was one of the suggestions that came out, just making uniform across all the boards. Except then, there is the exception for the Planning Board and as well as the ABC Board, and those are statutory, as well as, as I learned with the Planning Board, it's a UDO situation as well. So, and one of the other things that we thought about was the formula, you know, how do you encourage people to attend these meetings? And it doesn't just impact the, say, the Planning Board. And I'll use them for an example. Recently, we had persons, when they were here this evening, making a presentation before the Planning Board. And the Planning Board meeting was almost canceled, and that was due to not having a quorum. And, you know, that's one thing to inconvenience one of us, but it's another thing to inconvenience somebody who's wanting to put their money into our town. And so it's, you know, it's vitally important that these boards and committees continue and that there is some level of expectation that there will actually be a meeting. You know, I hate to think how many folks have carved out during their month, even though it's one day, whether it's a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and they say that, yeah, I'm going to go attend these, this board meeting and provide input for my town. And then to say their husband has, I don't know, ballet tickets or something on some Tuesday night, and that Tuesday comes around, the ballet is performing, and I'm supposed to be at a transportation meeting, and I get a call that says, you know, thanks for carving out that day for us, but we don't really need you. And starts, you know, that's just, that's not good. One of the other things we thought about were the term durations. You know, when I campaigned and decided I wanted to be on council, I looked at it like when I joined the military. I said, that's a four-year commitment. And our terms were set at three years. And that's a long time to think that I'm going to be on that committee for three years. So maybe, I thought maybe if the commitment wasn't as long, and perhaps reduce those terms from three years to one year or two year or something less, then some folks would, more folks would want to step forward and say, yeah, I could do that for a year or for two. One of the other things that came out of the meetings were the excessive absentees. Excuse me, absenteeism. And, you know, and I'm going to be honest, there's some game playing going on in some of the boards where it says, I know that I can show up and two meetings, miss one, be at the next two, miss one. Long as I don't hit that threshold of missing three meetings in a row, I'm golden. Or people only attending meetings when there's something there that's, they feel it's important to them, not necessarily important to the board. So I think that we need to, you know, look at the formula for allowable absences, and it's in a column as well over here. And, you know, one size doesn't fit all because we've reduced some of the frequency of our meetings. The safety, there's only four safety meetings during the year, whereas the Parks and Rec has 12, and Stormwater is six. So anyways, we, Patrick and myself, we worked together on this, put it to paper, and wanted to get you a copy this evening so that you could review it. And maybe in two weeks, come back with some recommendations or some changes that, if we don't have time to talk about it here tonight, we can take it home and start questioning some of what's going on. Yeah, the, thank you, Patrick, or whoever's running this. Meeting times, there, and I've done this to Mr. Cone. He's called me up and said, hey, what time does that meeting start? And I had just gone to a previous meeting and it'd be like 6:30. And I'll tell him six, you know, 6:30. He would have appreciated that, but I would get confused and be, I don't know, it was either six or seven, depending on which meeting. So we thought maybe the meeting times need to be started a little sooner, start them at 6 o'clock. It's just, this is a suggestion. So staff isn't here so long. And, you know, we can get in, have the meeting, and get on home. You know, I know like Stallings, they start their council meetings at seven, and y'all may feel that that's better than an earlier start time, as far as maybe get home and get dinner on the table and then come to a meeting. But again, I think it's just standardizing it is the most, you know, most important here. And I haven't really even given it too much thought about if there should be additional board committees or a reduction in them as well. Public safety is, you know, it's too bad that those meetings have been canceled because we have public safety issues going on right now with these hurricanes. So anyways, this is a little something we want to get out there and just start talking about.
Patrick, did you have any input?
No, sir. I think Council Morse covered it all. The part that I really spent time on is kind of combining the text among the five documents. And we turned in the document to Karen, and she looked over it. This is still in a draft format, and definitely we kept the planning and Board of Adjustment separately because they have a lot of statutes and the attendance is based on cases that you bring rocks, right? So it's a bit different in nature. That's why we kept them separately.
So the transportation, I've been here since February. It's never met. I'm supposed to be the liaison for that committee. There's never a quorum. So during that time, it hasn't served the town as intended. Same would go for public safety and security. It's not met. I'm not, I am in support of citizens participating in government, you know, whether it's on the board or committee or so forth. But the thing is, if it's not meeting, then, you know, what's the point of having it? So I think that's some of the questions that we kind of need to have. I mean, some of them, some of the other boards do meet regularly. Sometimes they can't because of, you know, they don't have anything before them, or it's not the time to meet. But I do have concerns about these two in particular. What, and I'm asking this for the rest of the council members, what are your thoughts in regards to this? And Mayor, you too as well, seeing that you do respond to a lot of public inquiries. But what are your thoughts on public safety and the transportation? None of these have met since I've been there, if I'm not mistaken. And the meeting occurrences has been, has gone down from, I think, 12 to four, which is, I think, reasonable. But it still hasn't been enough for a quorum. So.
I'll respond to that. The biggest, and Council, I believe you've heard this, and the biggest complaint that we get from our committee members is they don't have involvement in what's going on. It's more of sitting through a presentation rather than being involved. So if there was, like, for example, Parks and Rec and public safety can work together, we know what events we're going to do every year. Patrick can get together with the staff and say, okay, and with Chase, this is where we can use people throughout these events, and then throw it back on the volunteers saying, we have the trunk retreat, we have the fall festival, we need you volunteers as the public safety committee to be at Captain Cobal's will, where he can use people as opposed to his deputies. And with the Parks and Rec, maybe volunteering at the town table and getting ideas for things to do, rather than, I guess, the feeling of being, sitting in a PowerPoint presentation every week.
What about combining transportation and public safety into one? Maybe then we'll be able to get a quorum.
That's a good idea, Councilmember McIntyre. One of the reasons Mike, Jerry, and I, we thought about reducing regular members from seven to five, is to kind of, you know, five will always attend more than seven. So by reducing the number, we're hoping that that will help improve the attendance. But you're absolutely right. These two committees have not met for a long time, and I attend most of them. In the past, when I attended them, there wasn't much contribution from the members as we expected. I mean, we try during the meeting to get them engaged as much as possible by talking about budget, projects. We do have a lot of transportation projects, but the attendance and sort of like the interest is not there. Staff will do everything they can to get them involved. But that's why we kind of changed the application a little bit, trying to invite more experienced people in the field, because definitely we need to take their input. We would like somebody to come in and say, you know, this signals, I'm sitting 10 minutes on Indian Trail in the morning, waiting for traffic on Independence Boulevard. Come up with a recommendation or tell us, you know, how it's impacting them. But we don't get comments like that. And this is the engagement that we're looking for, is just help us out, bring us some things that we don't see in addition to all the projects, minor stuff. But you're absolutely right. There was no success whatsoever with these two committees. And the idea of maybe taking some of these members and put them in other committees that will work too, I mean, that'll give us more attendance if they're interested to join that committee.
But also, they have to kind of serve a purpose, right? People want to make sure they're not just showing up to a meeting and they're just talking. I mean, they could be doing that at home. But that they're showing up to a meeting and that there is involvement, they're participating, whether it's, you know, the Stormwater or the Parks and Rec or the ABC. But there is some value, some added benefit, some value to what they're doing. And therefore, I think they'd be more inclined to show up than not. But how do, I mean, maybe the design of or the responsibility of, you know, the transportation and public safety, maybe we have to amend that a bit to kind of give them a little more involvement in that some of the decisions that they make do have an impact, they can actually see that there's something tangible that they get from attending the meeting and voicing their opinions or they're making contributions in that aspect. So maybe that's lacking in there, and therefore, there's not any interest because come sit at a meeting and it doesn't really do anything.
Well, that's a good point. Reading the bylaws, really, if every member reads the bylaws and the chair concentrate on the bylaws and gives some of the members or the chair responsibility to come in and present before council, you know, take that responsibility and come in and say, you know, this project was discussed, and we looked at the budget, and we feel that some of the money needs to be spent here and there. Just giving them that chance to come before council, that will engage them more and get them excited and interested. But just being a member in that committee, we just need to give them more responsibility, I think. That's one idea that we could get them engaged. And that's, most of the bylaws for every one of these committees, that's what they say, that they have to come in, like Stormwater, they have to come in before, once a year, with a big report before council and let them know how is the Stormwater, where that money spent and all that stuff. So we could push a little bit in that area as much as we can, but the attendance is probably the main thing.
One of the things that I think to start off with, I think the alternates should be required to be at the meetings. Because there are people that come in for approval on something, and they've invested money and time, and they have people coming from out of town, like referring now to the Planning Board. And then it ends up there. And then it ends up there's not enough to make a quorum. So it's embarrassing to the town for this to happen. And on the application, I think they need to understand that they are an alternate. And just by coming and sitting and listening to the meeting, they should be able to pick up some information, especially like the Board of Adjustments, because that's a legal situation where it's more involved. But you have so many people and they don't get a chance to say anything. And so they lose interest and they'll say, well, why should I go to the meeting when I'm probably just going to sit in the back anyway? That's something that I thought about. Let's see what else. I had a note at home and I had everything on there, so I'll save that for another Sunday day, okay? But we need to encourage them to join, but that they have to participate. And being made to, if, required that they come to the meeting, I think that would help the situation some. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. A good point. I think, one, if we reduce the number of persons on a committee and you make it very clear that the alternates are welcome and they're, and more so than just welcome to attend, but be involved, actually, you know, be in the discussion, even if they're not the permanent member that votes. But as you were saying, you know, it keeps them up to speed. If something does happen to one of the permanent members, they're, you're not slowing down a meeting, asking questions that were already asked before. I think that's something that will just happen, especially with the reduced number. You know, and it's, I've seen it with the planning board meeting when I've sat here as a visiting, not a liaison, but just a visiting council person. We had the board member sitting up here, you had some alternates scattered out there, and it didn't seem like they were all a group. It felt, to me, it seemed like the alternates were like outcasts. They didn't get involved in the conversation and they didn't vote. So, you know, it was just an observation.
Mr. Hatt?
Couple of things. I would think that we need, need to talk about time at 6:00 PM. And I understand it's for the staff, but I'm wondering if that's too early. I'm wondering if we actually can get people here by 6:00. I almost think we need to go the other way and go to 7:00. Because, you know, if you have single parents, you know, if you have kids in school, there's certain things that they have to do before they ever can get here. I also think that all the meetings should be right here. And I think they should sit here. And so we got, what, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8? Is that, am I counting right? So if we put an extra chair up here, I think we cover everybody and have all the, if you're having the alternates, like you said, Shirley, they should be sitting up here and listening. They may not have the vote, but, you know. The other thing I just noticed, ABC Board, did it drop to two?
No.
No, that's to, for a quorum.
Oh, okay.
Just two out of the three members.
Okay. Well, if two members, if they have a quorum, how do they break a time?
They don't.
Okay.
There is.
Because I thought, I thought under the rules I was looking at, well, here, it consisted of three or five members. Is this set up by the ABC Commission out of Raleigh?
No.
No?
This could be set.
So we can do two?
That's correct. You could go three or five to, on the number of members. Michael, in regard to having the meeting here behind the dais, Councilmember Morse brought it to my attention. No problem with that at all. But when you have a horseshoe or a table, when everybody's sitting around, you'll be facing those folks. If you sit behind the dais, you'll be looking at the 180 degree. And that's why I just, I don't think it will be applicable. Planning and Board of Adjustment, they'll be looking at a client that's sitting in front of us. That's the only reason why we didn't make recommendation and go after that.
Parks and Recs. I attended one Parks and Recs meeting. I thought we actually had adjusted the number of meetings down.
I think, Michael, if I, if my memory serves me well, they skipped one in the summertime.
I thought we went down to like between 8:00 and 10:00.
Just to skip it. But that number also up to council to be reduced if council decide to do so. But we'll take the input of Jason and his staff and see. But I think Parks and Recs, they can, I mean, they're always there. They contribute and they have a quorum.
Shirley.
I noticed on Stormwater here, it had, that we meet the second Thursday of every month. We're now meeting every two months. We changed that. And the thing about that is, which you could do it on any of these, but you can always call a special meeting. And if there's an emergency and get somebody in there and that would cover that problem.
So.
Take every out and say.
Okay.
The first Tuesday of the month.
Of the month. That's correct. Thank you, Mrs. Al.
Charlie.
Yeah. As far as the start time, may I make a suggestion that we get the board chairmans, committee chairmans, to poll the people that are presently serving and see what's, you know, what they like? Because that's who we're wanting to fill these committees. And, you know, let them kind of set the direction of the start time. Is that possible, Patrick?
Absolutely. We will, we will send something out there.
I'll just throw this out. Here's another idea. So if you're going to have horseshoes, you've got a couple of different meeting rooms. And then from a staffing position, what if you had a couple of committees at the same time? So you have one in one.
We do have the rooms for that, Mike.
Right.
So, I mean, we have three community.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So what if you had, let's just say, transportation and.
At the same time.
Parks and Recs, the first Tuesday of every month.
That can be done. Sure.
I don't know if that would help the staff or not, but help cleaning anyway. Wouldn't have to, you know, looking for input out there as well.
Mr. Cohn?
When I started on the town council, we didn't have a public safety committee. And I helped start it again, thinking it's a really good idea to have a public safety committee. But, you know, I sit here, the committees that we absolutely need and we have to have is the ABC Board, I think. You have to have Board of Adjustment. You have to have Planning Board. You have to have Stormwater. You know, we're sitting up here and we're trying to rack our heads and saying, these people, you know, can't get people to come, can't get a quorum. And I don't believe it's, has anything to do with what time they, it is that they get here. I think 90% of what it is, is my opinion, is when you have a public safety committee, what the public, what does the public safety committee do? Public safety committee really doesn't have anything to do because you got the, you got the, you know, Chase knows every in and out and what we're doing. A lot of suggestions that they make, they really can't even do because they don't, they don't even know. And I think they get somewhat discouraged, you know? And, you know, we can't really use them. We thought that at one time we could use them for volunteers. And you really can't use them for volunteers. You can't put, in many cases, it's dangerous to use them for volunteers in certain things. So, you know, maybe we don't rack our heads about trying to get here at 7:00 or 6:30. If people don't want to, want to come to these meetings, just ban them, you know? Get rid of them. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I'm just meaning they don't want to come. And I understand why they don't want to come. And Meg, I know you just, you just did, joined the transportation committee. I don't even know that you've even attended a transportation committee. But if you think about it, what does a transportation committee do? You know, you got the DOT, you got the town, you know, they can make suggestions to the town on a traffic light or whatever, but is that really what they want to do? No. They don't want to make a, you know, they, I think they really want to feel like, you've had some great ideas, you know? And you probably ought to join DOT instead of the transportation. You know? You know, so I think one of the things that the council should really look at is not necessarily to keep pushing something that ain't working. Listen, I thought we needed a public safety committee, but, you know, after sitting through several meetings, didn't really, at that point, didn't really see the purpose of it. And, you know, one thing is two staff shows up for these things or sets aside their schedule for it, and then no meeting, you know? No meeting, no meeting, no meeting. And, you know, absolutely, you need an ABC Board, you know? You can't operate without it, you know? Board of Adjustments, but as far as, and another one is Parks and Recs. What actually does the Parks and Recs Commission, and I know because I've been, but Parks and Recs, that, they started out, you know, with some really good ideas that we do certain things and we do this and do that. But pretty soon, you run out of those same ideas. You keep going over, there's really, you run out and say, there's really nothing left to do. And the main thing that Parks and Recs, I think, tries to do is to put things in, or do things that the public wants. And what they do so many times is they put out, and they operate a lot on social media, where they put on social media what all, and they get all their answers on social media. And so they're really letting the public tell them directly what to do. These are, this is my suggestion. We don't, we don't necessarily have to have it. You know, if we had people showing up, that'd be one thing, but we don't have people showing up. So to lower the, to make the expectations to try to, you know, get them here, I just think maybe we ought to consider just doing away with some of the committees and seeing how that works or not. But it's just, that's just a suggestion to council. It's not necessarily that we have to have these committees if public safety, and not to repeat myself, in the Parks and Recs, in transportation, if there's really nothing for them to do. There's not much to do. People don't want to show up, you know? They're really not, even the ones that we, we need, you know, surely, we have to have the, we have to have the Stormwater. But sometimes, there's nothing to do with a Stormwater committee, you know? Or there could be nothing to do at a Stormwater committee, let's put it that way. And so then people don't show up. And as far as making or asking people to come as an alternate, they're supposed to come anyway, are they not? Aren't alternates supposed to come to every meeting? So you're not really asking, you know, having to ask them, they're supposed to show up like everybody else. But anyway.
It's not enforced.
Well, now?
It's not been enforced.
Well, none of it's, I mean, surely, not only is the alternate not showing up, but neither is the, the regular committee members aren't showing up. So, I mean, you know, why would, why would you expect an alternate to show up if the committee members aren't also showing up? I know what you're saying. But, you know, it's just, I think you got.
Somebody hit a comment over there. Patrick?
David, I think you hit it right on the money. Just to give you an example with the Parks and Rec, I sat down with Jason a couple of times. And I found out that it's always repetitive, the stuff that he puts in the presentation and show the members is the same. But you're right, most of it is on social media. I mean, we use every mean out there to make sure that those programs are out there. In regard to the public safety, we have classes, you know, from the fire department, Johnny Blythe comes in here, Chase and his folks, they come in, do classes. They bring up stuff sometimes about animal control and all that. Most of these items are covered by Union County. So these are some of, what you mentioned, some of the restrictions on members that doesn't allow them to get engaged. But I totally agree. And in transportation, we have not met. Again, we do have a project, we do have budget, they're controlled by DOT, by CRTPO. We have to make sure they follow regulatory things. So the members doesn't have much to really, to get engaged. I'm not trying to put these, but what you mentioned is our facts. So we've seen him, we've experienced that. As a matter of fact, when we were on the old building, we brought that issue again. And these three committees were brought up. We made the recommendation that if we don't have attendance, to go ahead and abandon them and take them out. So that recommendation's been made by staff before.
If I just make one comment. One thing that is likely missing in some of these committees is training. And so I think establishing, especially for zoning and zoning Board of Adjustments and Planning, having an annual training session with, in which the staff or whoever, you know, council even, council members come in and emphasize the responsibility and how important it is to the town that this be, that this, you know, how important this committee is to the town, what the goals of the committee are that year, what your job is as a committee member. I think that's huge because I don't know if anybody, you sit down and the people who've been there forever say the same things they've said before. But if you get some training, and again, a planning board, it's extraordinarily detrimental to a developer if you, if you have a planning board that you have to, that has to approve or deny or advise the council.
They do change.
Right. And I'm just, I'm saying, let's make sure we're doing this on an annual basis and that. Those two are great. But even, even if it's a committee of a, an issue of importance to the town, for example, downtown revitalization, maybe instead of a transportation committee, the town council says, we would love citizens' input and ideas on a downtown revitalization plan. And so you put together a committee for that purpose and then they come up with a presentation. So more of a issue-specific type process might be helpful also. But again, it's training and it's a deliverable that this council's expecting out of that committee. And again, I think you hit it on the, if you got nothing to do, nobody's going to show up. But if you have a thoughtful reason for having the committee and a thoughtful training program and a deliverable that's expected, people will flock, I believe. Because there's probably a lot of interest in helping out if you know what you're going to, what you're going to end, the end product's going to be.
Todd, you had something? Thank you, Charlie.
This is just my opinion, but I think a lot of people that join committees, they want to be involved, they want to know what the town does. To me, again, like Patrick said, especially transportation, I mean, these projects are slow. I mean, they're slow-going. They take years sometimes. And you run into things like Park Rec does where you get repetitive. If it's just simply, you know, if the citizens just want to know more about projects or more about what DOT is doing, then why don't we do like a bi-annual education? Just say, look, throw it out there on social media, they come to town, the community room downstairs. And we just, the town, the staff does a presentation and just kind of gets everybody up to speed on what's going on in more detail. And then let them fill questions and you do that. And really, I think that's all a lot of committee members want. They want to be educated on what's going on. And then they, but they get in these meetings and they get, they figure out, well, you know, we're not really doing anything. We're just hearing the same, same thing. So they get disinterested by basically what's happening. Especially with public safety, that's the same, same deal for everything. It's just repetitive. So I don't know, it's just an idea. Maybe just do that and that maybe that'll quench the citizen's thirst as far as communication.
Mr. McIntyre?
So I had a very long tenure on the planning board, really, really long. However, before coming on board, before attending the meeting, there was training put together. There was a binder that the planning boards, or the planning department staff put together too as well. So maybe for some of the other boards that we do really need, that's probably something that probably needs to be considered. ABC, I don't know if you guys do that, but I'm probably sure you do because of the statutes and so forth that you have to follow. But maybe that's something that the other people can kind of, all the other committees can kind of put together. As to here, the, before they even come to a meeting, have sort of like an orientation. I think that's what it's called. I think then it's, you served on one, you served on the planning board before, right? And then when you and I took that together, even if you were coming back on, you and I took that orientation together. So you got sort of reacquainted with some of the things. So that, I think that probably kind of makes sense to, the ones that we do need, I agree with David, we, there's some of them we don't need. And it's not that we just, we don't want citizens to participate, but maybe from what Todd is saying, get them in here, kind of, here's what's going on in the town. You hear from all the departments that are relevant to, you know, some of the things that need to be spoken about. But if Stormwater needs to meet and we have a new member coming on, probably. probably put together, uh, you know, orientation, here's your expectations. Here's how often we're gonna meet, here's some of the decisions that we have, or that has come before us. And here's kind of how we look at it and go from there. That way people, you know the expectations. Or maybe even before people apply, kind of give them that, you know, can read a little bit more on the website as to what the expectations are. From attendance to decisions, how involved they are, what, when they decide, what really happens.
Okay, Patrick?
Just, uh, to follow up on, uh, Mr. McIntyre. I think, uh, we do have success, uh, in attendance with the Board of Adjustment and Planning. Uh, and I'm repeating myself here, is because we do have clients that come in here and there is a goal. Then on top of that, the regulations for those, uh, committees are a bit different from the other committees. You know, you have the statutes that you have to follow, you have rules and regulations. So in nature, they're different than the other three. The other three, uh, we don't have somebody that comes in and he's, he has to get approval from us. So it's a, it's a completely different, and I think that has a lot to do with it. Transportation project, as Karen mentioned, yeah, we could, uh, just keep in mind that by law and by, uh, the funding agency, we have to have public meetings, we have to have stakeholders meeting. So they could be part of that. We just want to make sure that we, we're not duplicating efforts. In regard to the orientation, I think it's an excellent idea. That might lead to interest in those committees. So we don't have any problem, uh, trying that. But, but please keep in mind the difference between those two committees and the other three. And, and ABC too, which is a different, uh, animal out there.
There's been, there's been a lot of input here for this. Patrick, on this revision, did you want to take it back with all the inputs you've gotten, bring it back to the next meeting? Does council have any committees that they wish to have removed at this time? Or have Patrick come back with recommendations and a new, or a revised plan?
I think Todd had the perfect solution to transportation. Have a, a, you know, a couple of meetings a year and just, just talk about what, what we're doing.
Update.
Update.
Mr. Morse?
And let it, let it be a general meeting for the public.
I think you do the same thing with public safety too. Um, I think that'd be probably a, a good way to do it. And that way people can voice their concerns, uh, on public safety. And if they have them, that this is the time to come and talk about them. And not only a committee, but for everybody and, um.
Jerry?
In all the years you've been on council, David, with, um, public safety, what, what has come out of that particular committee that was beneficial? That you might be able to think of off the top of your head?
No, I, 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 I don't want to. I don't know if this came out of the public safety committee, a rock that was in the park that they were afraid of kids were gonna fall on and get hurt. And maybe that came out of, did that come out of the pub-? Who, who is the public safety commit-? What, this would probably be a better question for you, Adam. Um, what do you, what did you see that came out of, out of the public?
So I've only done it since January. Todd did it before then. Since I've been doing it, they've only met twice. And they only talked about, and that was January and February, and they haven't met since February. And they talked about trying to almost do kind of what you're saying now, like have a time that the public could come talk about public safety. And that was the only, that's really the only thing that they talked about in those two meetings, so.
And, and I think some of that stuff too, Jerry, and, and Chase was in here, he probably could answer, but he's not. The, um, you know, and maybe even Todd. Chase, the question is, um, we, we're talking about the different committees, people not showing up about public safety committee. What do you see as maybe some of the advantage? We're, we're talking about, we're afraid that maybe they're, they, people get, there's nothing for them to do, is basically. What, what do you see that they could do? Or we're thinking about saying, hey, maybe just come twice a year to some meetings and we just sit and we talk. What, what, what's your, your, the expertise on this?
I don't know if I got much expertise. So honestly, the public safety meeting or the public safety committee, historically from the best of my memory, um, and surely maybe, maybe I'm gonna have to look to, to remind me of some of this. But back in 2009, eight, nine, somewhere in that era, there was a lot of the debate going back and forth at that time about, um, either doing their own service here in Indian Trail or continuing contracting at the time. And so some of the elected officials that were on council at the time sparked that public safety committee that was, I guess in their mind, was gonna go investigate which way to go with that. And very early on.
Police Department or?
Right, right.
I would think would have no, they should have nothing to do with.
I, I think was, was the original intent of that seating of that group. And then very early on, it was, it was realized and found out that that's way more of a complex concern than, than, you know, there's somebody on a part-time basis is gonna be able to come in there very green and not have any background in it and, and get figured out on. So, you know, in the past, our interaction with the public safety committee has been that, that we, we didn't get involved in like being the, the role of the town employee with, like the liaison would be with other committees. Um, you know, if you guys want to revise that, we're certainly open to, to doing that or maybe sharing that responsibility. Instead of having a town staff member, we, I consider us as staff as well. So if you wanted us to be, to take that under our, our umbrella, so to say, then we'd be certainly glad at looking at doing that. And maybe we, we try to host the meetings at our office or at our main office or at the fire station. And we've done them around, you know, whenever Todd's done them. You know, other employees have had them in the past, we've gone around and tried to expose them to the fire departments and, and our, our stuff and all. And we even talked about having them over at our building now that we got back in over there. But I think by the time that, that that conversation happened, there was a, a lack of quarrels that just continued on, so.
Well, just not to interrupt you, but it sounds like to me that, that Chase is talking about doing exactly what Todd's talking about. Maybe, maybe.
Was Todd talking about throwing them off on me?
Maybe once or twice a year, the public come to you guys and you guys do a meeting.
Now, I do know that one thing that, that one thing that, you know, is my grand vision, I guess, and we don't ever seem to have time to, to do at work what we'd like to do versus what we need to do on a, on a regular basis. But one of the things that we've talked about, and Cody's actually been working on here lately, Cody Luke, the captain of this Silver, uh, Community, or over our Community Resources, has been talking about, uh, doing a, a, um, oh, my mind just went blank. Where you, where you, like a citizen academy. Talking about doing a citizens' academy and then maybe spawning from there to doing, and that just is mainly just to get you engaged in seeing what it is we actually do. It's not to give anybody any responsibilities, duties, I won't deputize David for everybody's sake and, and we'll all, but it doesn't. The citizens' academy Waxall does and, and honestly, they get in, people that come in there and, you know, they, they get exposed to a lot of different things that we do. They do a short ride, a long period, and a lot more than what our public safety has ever been able to. We've tried to expose them to some things, but, you know, that's still separate from this. But there again, I don't, I guess you guys need to tell me and Todd what it is that you want them doing.
I just wanted to get your interaction with that, with the citizens' academy. We, we used to do that, if we, if you guys remember.
The town did one.
Citizens' academy. And, and one of the big problems that we had with the citizens' academy in Indian Trail is it became very political. It was a, it was, I don't know if you remember, it, it was, it was.
See, we were doing.
We do, up here, remember that. And it was, it ended up, and my, just in my opinion, and I think Shirley's and Jerry's and everybody else's, it was a political.
And see, from, from that standpoint, we, you know, that was the town citizen academy that taught you about town government and, you know, all the different functions. We were one day of that where we came over. What we were looking at doing for our citizens' academy was, is it would mainly expose people to the work that our people do out in the field. And, you know, Waxall, CNPD, a lot of places do it, but it's not, you know, politically geared or oriented. It's mainly just focused on law enforcement.
This would be something you would do.
Right, it would be something that, that our agency's looking at doing. But I guess my answer, or my question back before I can answer really, is what does council, what do you have an envision of the public safety committee being able to come back and do for you? Because.
I think that the, the vision that we have is probably disbanding it.
Well, and, you know, honestly, if you, you know, if you wanted them as an advisory board to come back to you and give you any advice on anything, then they're gonna have to meet more than just twice a year so that they can stay involved and knowledgeable about what the current topics or the current stuff that's going on is. So if they meet twice a year, then what are they gonna be able to do for that twice a year? Now, we can cook some good barbecue for them, but what are they gonna be able to do for that twice a year? They're not gonna be able to really come back after two meetings and, and say, hey, Jerry, this is what we think you should do, as, as far as their advice. I think some of the other, the other committees are able to come here and they've gone a little bit more in-depth into the topic than once you guys get time to. So, you know, you're trusting their opinion on something. But if they're only gonna meet twice a year, I don't, really don't know that from fire or our side or anything else that they're gonna be able to advise you on anything.
Well, that's not, we, we were not, we're not saying like meet twice a year. That would be more like for the general public to come, not a meet, not a, a group of people, but anybody could come. But, but what, let me ask you this, and, and I think we probably ought to move on, is, is, um, what does this public safety came to you with over the last seven years? That, that, that would, that would, and, and, and what I was trying to explain to the council was is there's so much that they don't know what you, you know, you, it's, it's like, one time I think I came to you and said, I think the public safety committee would like to, to work the, the spring fling thing. And you came to me and go, well, Dave, we can't really do that. We can't let citizens do that kind of thing because, you know, we don't, we don't do that.
Yeah, that's right, to do traffic or anything else or to help with parking or.
And I came to you about doing the schools, that somebody, the public safety committee director can't, well, they can't do that.
Right.
And they don't know that. They don't know that they can't, that, 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 that purpose.
So, so eventually getting, getting to what we would desire to have later on, and this is from the sheriff's office doing, not from the town having to do, is if and when we ever can get our, our citizen academy up and going, then you come say, hey, we want to be involved, we want to know what the sheriff's office does. And Union County, we want to know what law enforcement does around here. You join the citizens' academy, you graduate from that. Once you graduate from that, you become eligible then to become a citizen volunteer. At which time, you've got a core fundamental understanding of what is, what is it we do. Then you would say, I want to volunteer my time, at which point you commit to that you're willing to come in for training to get certified to do certain things like traffic control and things to spot at events and things like that. We still don't, we still wouldn't send citizen volunteers out on their own, but like say for the hurricane that we last experienced, we may would have called our citizen volunteers, had them on standby for if we got overwhelmed from town staff, our staff. We needed, you know, them to come here to help set up relief or cook meals for the town staff or cook meals for the deputies, or go get a piece of equipment in Gastonia to where I don't need to send a deputy to Gastonia to get a generator. But I can say, hey, I'm gonna send so-and-so up there and this is the person that'll show you their citizen ID card and they're coming to get it for us. So there is a, a, a asset that we could use citizens for. But I think that's more of us doing because then we'd have to screen for backgrounds and do a lot more for us. But as far as what you've got up here on the board, I think Mr. McIntyre was getting back to, your comment was probably, you know, I don't want to say that they're not helpful or that, I think they mean well. I just don't know really how their place fits in with the town. Now that they've got their, you know, when they were originally started, that's what it was about. After that, it kind of fell to the wayside, so. Sorry to be long-winded, but y'all know how I am.
I think Patrick has enough information if, uh, to come back with, um, revised, like Todd's suggestion, David's suggestion, um, trim down the amount of committees we have to the ones that are necessary. But on a personal note, I know Chase has mentioned that exact thing to me seven years ago. Uh, and he's been very passionate about it ever since. And I don't think he really ever had an ear until now for it. I'd like the council to maybe suggest that we work with Chase to put something like that together and get people involved with the sheriff's office. And then we are at their service on how to guide people to him, if I'm communicating properly.
That's a great idea. I mean, that'll directly impact Indian Trail in, in, in a positive way. You know, I, I don't know if it's, if it's prudent tonight to just suggest to eliminate the public safety and security committee.
You can, you're the council.
And then my thoughts on the transportation is, you know, where I could, where I see that that, the members could be beneficial is like this public comment period that we just, that disclosed regarding the roads around here. Disseminating that information to the public, um, to get more involved with that way. But I didn't hear any really, any compelling reason to keep public safety.
That's up to you guys.
If we're gonna do pink slips, so to speak, I think a nice letter should be written.
Before we make that move actually.
Well, and I think we can do away with transportation and, and, uh, I like Todd's suggestion that we, we have, um, public meetings, you know, once or twice a year. And talk about, uh, because everybody's interested in, in, in traffic, but they want to know what the solutions are. You can tell them what, what is on the horizon, what's happening. So more of an information-type meeting.
So, um, go ahead, Todd.
And we, we could also, you know, uh, send out like a questionnaire during the meeting and stuff and they just fill it out and mail it back. And then we get suggestions from the whole public, not just a few members.
Um, Kong Swuman How made an, an important point in that. I know we want to vote tonight on it, but she was saying that there's some people who are on the committees that may not have been able to meet because there's no quorum. And I think that before we make that decision, we probably contact them just to kind of find out from them and let them know kind of the intention before we make any final decision on that. That way, kind of doing it in a professional manner. That way they're not just finding out that, that we met and we just disbanded it. Thank you, Shirley, for that.
They could, they could be moved over to another committee like there's.
If they want to, right?
Stormwater. And fill the rest of the committees out.
Patrick, you have enough information on what council's looking for?
Plenty.
And council is. Council, is it okay to have Patrick, uh, work with Chase on starting Chase's, uh, suggestions that he made up there? Is anybody opposed to that?
No, none at all.
Okay, Patrick? Chase, is that okay with you?
Thanks, sir.
Good deal, okay. Uh, that brings us to D, Board Committee Member Appointments. Do we just want to table that now?
I'd make a motion that we table that.
Well, I think we only have one person.
That's for the planning board, isn't it?
The planning board, which we are, which we're not getting rid of, so.
Well, you can, Mr. Cohen makes a valid point.
You guys, we, we did it the same thing last week.
Do you want to vote on the planning board?
I don't know if anybody's waiting to hear.
Well, this might make a big difference now, what you're gonna get is applicants. If you're taking ten committees down.
It's also not fair to the person that's been, that's already showed interest and it's, it's, it's fifty-fifty either way.
Either way, I don't care.
Let's go, Mr. David, make the motion then.
Let's make a motion, let's go ahead and vote on it. And, and, um, uh, and that way we'll, we'll get that done, because it is a planning board. I, I, I have one applicant that I, I'd make a motion to, uh, put Michelle Reese on the.
Mr. Cohen's made a motion to appoint Michelle Reese to the planning board. Uh, open, which seat, David? Which seat is it?
Uh, let's see. Well, there's two, there's, uh, there's two vacant seats, planning alternate two and alternate three. Uh, let's say alternate, uh, two.
Alternate two. Okay, all in favor?
Wait. That's Michelle.
What?
Michelle Reese we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to mention.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, that brings us to new business, Highway seventy-four naming issues. Mr. Seda, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Union County Commission put an ordinance simply to change, uh, the naming of the Monroe Bypass, Monroe Connector to, uh, US seventeen bypass and also.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. And changing.
Seventy-four or seventeen?
Seventy-four. Sorry about that, seventeen is at the beach. Just can't get it out of my mind. And changing, uh, US seventy-four to, uh, seventy-four business. And, uh, I think, uh, the commission tasked, uh, some of the planning members, Rox, correct me if I'm wrong, to, uh, have an outreach to the. me if I'm wrong, to, uh, have an outreach to the public, especially those three hundred business owners or property owners in Indian Trail, Monroe and, uh, Wendig. Uh, and they've already, I think, conducted a meeting. They asked us if we could conduct a meeting here at the building and I told Rox, hold off until, uh, we bring it before council because I do have, uh, some, some reservation in regard to, uh, to the naming. And, uh, I got about ten items and I'd like to share them with council. Uh, I think, uh, when everyone, every one of us, when you travel and if you're trying to go from one point A to point B, most of the time, you get on the bypass and you try to avoid the business. And simply you avoid the business because of traffic signals, et cetera, et cetera, unless you really want to stop and eat and stuff like that. So, I do believe that, uh, the, the opening, the new connector is going to, uh, take some motorists maybe, like they claim twenty or twenty-five percent of the motorists from business to the connector. Uh, so, uh, what I'm trying to understand is if the county wants to name it Business Seventy-four, in my opinion, I think we need, they need to keep in mind that the minute you say business, you're going to divert traffic to the bypass. So, that's the first reservation, uh, I have. Uh, and, and definitely business will suffer from diverting the traffic. Uh, I think because they have not finished the super street yet and the Monroe Connector is going to open in November and we believe it's going to divert traffic, I think we should wait a little bit before we make a decision or join the county to, uh, uh, go with the change. Uh, the change is going to cost us money because the state would like, uh, wants the municipality to pay a charge of cha- uh, uh, the cost of changing the signs. Another reservation that I have to imagine, opening the connector for three, four months then turn around and, and changing the name, that will have some impact and some confusion too. Uh, another item would be, uh, the intent of the super street is with putting the U-turn is to move through movement. That means that traffic on, on Independence or Highway seventy-four is going to be moving faster. That means people's going to stop less frequent. And what that does to with designating it as Business Seventy-four, that probably will rob some more business out of the communities. I think if, in the long run, as we grow and the bypass will attract more traffic, I think both, uh, uh, the connector and existing Highway seventy-four will generate more traffic. Our residents, including everybody that lives in Indian Trail, when they know that there is less traffic on Independence Boulevard, they'll be targeting Independence Boulevard to go downtown, auto Monroe, to do more business on seventy-four. So, what I do recommend just from the observation that I have is that, uh, to really wait and see, uh, uh, before we, we make a move to, uh, join Union County and, and changing, uh, the signs and paying the cost and, uh, going through the exercise.
So, if we do nothing, what happens at this point in time?
If, if we do nothing, uh, uh, one thing will happen is that, uh, we will not be sharing any cost with Union County in regard to, uh, changing the signs. Also, we will not be doing outreach like they're doing and we will not be, uh, asking the citizens of Indian Trail on the corridor to change addresses, which is that has a lot of cost and tangible or intangible. So, um, I would say if Union County wants to take that task, uh, that they task, uh, take it, uh, at their own, but we always have to look at working with Union County and be a team player. But I just wanted council, Michael, I, I know I haven't answered your question, but I, I would say we should wait and wait, uh, we should sit and wait till they open the bypass and see how both roadway function and they can, make a decision then. But to some folks, it might look like you're waiting too much on, on the naming. Uh, if you want to change the name, go ahead and do it as soon as you can.
Well, I'm, no, I'm like you, I, to me, I, I don't, I don't want to really call it Highway seventy-four business.
The, the, it might come back and, and kind of hurt us in a way if, if the business owners and the property owners on Independence, if something doesn't go their way and we take this step, we might be taking the blame for that.
I have a question, Patrick. If, um, if we don't do it and everybody else does, will it, then, will the name just be different, an Indian Trail, then it will be-
It has to be one of them.
It has to be the whole-
Yes, sir.
It's all or nothing.
Yes, sir.
So, if we don't, if we don't do it, then nobody can do it, is that basically the problem?
Yes.
Nobody can do it or Union County supersedes and it's going to be seventy-four business?
That, I don't know, they might, uh, yield back to the federal government or the state, North Carolina DOT, and maybe we'll get something from them saying that it, it is going to. But I think DOT and the feds will probably be waiting for the communities to come up with something. So, I, I would wait and if it comes from Raleigh, that it needs to be changed, then Raleigh-
Isn't it the Union County that wants to, that wants to change it? Isn't it the Board of Commissioners that want to change that?
Yes, sir, I think Rox, they started the task, correct?
I think they started your original question. I think right now they're in a, in a public E-P-A session where they're working with the Chamber of Commerce to see what the business community believes is the right way to go with the citizens. And so, I think that's the process they're about to engage is, you know, what, I mean, the most important thing in the state, what is, what is the business community, uh, going to feel is the right way for that. So, that's what's happening now.
So, if I can ask a quick question, what benefit does it serve besides increasing the cost on the businesses? Um, changing the name, is that expected to generate more revenue? Um, is the, uh, US seventy-four going to be somewhere, some other roadway going to be called US seventy-four? I mean, if they want to change it from US seventy-four to just US seventy-four business, right? So, I mean, to you, does that make it more enticing that you're going to shop or eat on US seventy-four business? I mean, I'm trying to figure what's the, I know there's an election coming up in November, so some people are getting excited down in Monroe, which is fine, that's, that's okay. But what benefit does it really serve the residents or the business owners along seventy-four here in Indian Trail or Monroe for that matter? Uh, and any idea?
Let me go back to the two school of thoughts here. I believe that the connector is going to take cars away from US seventy-four.
Yes.
They think if they name it business, they will have more people come in to conduct business, so.
But what, the, the, but if that's the case, then they shouldn't have built the bypass then just to keep all the cars on seventy-four.
That's right.
The reason they brought the bypass is because people who don't want to conduct business-
Right.
Will use the bypass.
Right.
I, I don't know, I mean, maybe I'm a little skeptical because I'm from way down south, but I don't see the benefit of it, honestly.
Mr. Morse, you've been trying to say something.
Well, I guess the, the, the people that are going to have the most impact are the business owners on seventy-four. So, you say there's an outreach going on with the Chamber of Commerce in Union County. Are they contacting the businesses along seventy-four? And if, if they are, are they doing it in Monroe, um, just Union County? And then also, are they expecting Indian Trail to do the same thing, to reach out to the business owners and find out what, how do they feel about it?
As I understand it right now, they are going to be, the notification process will be to all business owners affected along the corridor. It's not one jurisdiction versus another. They, they recognize the commonality and the partnership that needs to happen, uh, in this communication effort. And so, as I understand it, there's, there's going to be a mailing undertaken and I think they're, they also want to use, uh, the chamber's membership directory to notify business owners through those channels and then obviously, you know, use, I, I would presume our social media channels. And so, I think they are again getting geared up for that endeavor. I think there's going to be a, they're going to be gearing up for two community meetings, a daytime and an evening meeting that'll be held at the chamber's office in Monroe. And, um, I would hope that they will coordinate their, you know, media, their outreach to the citizens with our, you know, media coordinator, uh, Mr. Parks, and, uh, make sure, you know, everyone that has an interest in this will have an opportunity to attend and, and share their opinion, pro or con.
So, are you just looking for, is this for something to be voted on, Patrick? Or just informational?
Uh, no, uh, this is FYI for council, but if, if you want us to take extra step to also maybe conduct a meeting here at Town Hall that helps, uh, during the, the reaching out to the business owner, we could do that. But I told Rox, let's just stop right now until we hear from council. So, I, I would let Union County, I know, continue with their path since they're doing it for all municipalities and just wait and see what the survey going to come back with and then we'll come back to council. But I've know, I've, a couple councils heard, heard about it and we just wanted you to know what we have in our hand that you didn't know about, which is the outreach and, uh, the plan and, uh, by, by the way, the, the signage for Highway seventy-four bypass has been approved by ASHTO and CRTPO. So, the, the big wigs up in, I guess, DC, they approved on the change, they approved the, the naming, changing the name. So, I think, uh, Union County wouldn't have an ordinance and North Carolina DOT won't allow it if ASHTO didn't approve it.
Any other questions? Uh, just go with Patrick's suggestion. Council?
Yeah.
Okay. Look, consensus for Patrick's suggestion?
Yes.
Just, uh, let them, okay, Patrick, looks like they agree with you.
That's what we're going to do.
Take the lead.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to managers update, Patrick?
Uh, I would like to say that, uh, I did send the managers report, it was very comprehensive. Uh, I'd like to see if you have any questions, but we are moving heavily on the projects, the downtown projects, we're moving, uh, on the design. Chestnut Parkway Phase Three, I think Todd's effort, uh, reduced the consultant's fee about seventy thousand dollars and right now, we're going, we're still going after them to reduce it some more. We're trying to reduce all these extra reviews by North Carolina DOT, which is some cases, you know, at sixty-five percent, they have two, at seventy-five, they have two, then at ninety percent, they have four times review and that, all that cost money. So, we, we, we're trying to reduce the cost of the design and, and inspection and, and all that stuff, hopefully by, above a hundred K. So, I think that's a goal we could accomplish. Other than that, if the council has any question in regard to any of the projects, uh, we'll be more than happy to respond.
No questions. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us to council comments, Karen.
Uh, Ms. Howe. Short and sweet, thanks, everybody, for coming tonight. It was a good meeting and again, you see, we're trying to do what's best for the town and things flow very smoothly and it's, it's just nice to come and not get uptight about everything. I mean, and everybody does a good job and I appreciate being able to be here to be part of it. Thank you. Be careful going home.
Mr. Morse.
Yeah, I agree, good meeting tonight. Moving forward on a couple of items, uh, just, you know, this week with the weather event coming, uh, just everybody, please be safe and, you know, check on your, check on your pets too that are going to be outside. They, uh, it's going to be really, really wet, so, but everyone, have a good night.
Mr. Head.
Enjoy the rest of your evening, drive home safely.
Mr. Cohen.
Same to you. Good night and see you next time. Get a, get a, get a, thank you for coming.
Mr. McIntyre.
Should I make mine a very long speech for all of you guys or?
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre.
Oh, thank, thank you, everybody, for coming. Um, again, a, a good meeting and there's a lot of preparation and reading that goes behind the scene in terms of the managers' report, the agenda and other things, questions that we ask, so, but it's good working with you guys, thank you very much, appreciate you. Drive home safe, everybody.
And Mayor Abrams.
Uh, I'll ditto all their comments, thank you, Chase. Thank you, staff, for being here and everyone that came. Have a great evening and God bless.
We have closed session.
At this time?
It is.
We have to go to session on NCGS one four three, three one eight, one one. Need a motion to go to closed session.
So moved.
Morse made the motion, all in favor?
Not favored.
That would be unanimous.
Let us do this.